Mrs. Entenbrenner, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Hydell, here. Mr. Campiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson is absent, and Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Here. Mrs. Bender, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I ask, um, this is Principal Megan Patack. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're ready for communications with the whole school.
Good evening. It is my great honor to be principal here at Edison Middle School. On behalf of Assistant Principal, Mrs. Megan Patack, who was just up here doing the pledge with me, and our entire staff, I'd like to just take a moment to welcome the Board of Education, the district administrators, and the parents and community members who have joined us here tonight. As host, I have the pleasure of bragging a bit about our school. Our students are doing amazing things every single day, in athletic competitions, to fine arts performances, to club activities, and of course, in the classroom. Well, I would love to stand up here for an hour, not really, but for an hour, illustrating for you the depth and breadth of our talented students and staff. In the interest of time, we will focus on just one exciting development from this year: the ROLL. Last March, I had the opportunity to attend the ASCD Conference in Chicago and went to a presentation by the author of this book, Mark Barnes. I was so impressed by the fact that he was a 20-year veteran, middle school language arts teacher, who realized that he was not effectively engaging his students in their learning. He spent months reading books and articles by Daniel Pink and Alfie Kohn about motivation, and then he completely reorganized his classroom. As a former language arts teacher myself, I was intrigued by the various strategies and thought that several of Edison's language arts teachers would also be interested in his work. I invited the language arts and special education teachers to participate in a summer book study of his book and was thrilled that so many of them chose to participate. This is the team. Language arts teachers and special education teachers from every grade level read the book, as did our ELL teacher, our new LLC director, and even a math teacher. As the summer wore on, I was curious what some of the teachers would think about the strategies. Some of them were pretty revolutionary. I couldn't have been more pleased with their response. I still remember one day in early August when Mrs. Kilcoyne came in and the first thing she said as she held up the book was, "This book changed me. Can we do this?" And then when Mrs. Gordon came in, she held up her book, this is actually her copy, and you see all these post-it notes. And she said, "You don't really need this back, do you? Because I'm gonna need it for a while." And I thought, "No, keep it as long as you like." So obviously, I was thrilled that teachers were ready to engage in conversations about how they saw incorporating the ROLL in their classrooms. So what is it? ROLL is based on a results-only work environment, which was coined by Best Buy in the corporate world, which is a focus on productivity and achievement. So essentially, ROLL in the classroom is result-only learning, which is a place where students willingly strive to learn. What more would we want? Basically, Barnes outlined six strategies for the ROLL classroom: a year-long project, talking less, teachers talking less; incorporating choice in every assignment; providing a workshop setting; integrating technology; and replacing grades with feedback. The first strategy is incorporating the year-long project. All of the language arts teachers who read this book incorporated a reading-all-year project. And so the students are encouraged to read 20 to 25 books over the course of the year. I mean, that is a lot of books for some of these students who've not read very many books in the past. And so it's exciting to go to the different teachers' classrooms and see these trees. As a student finishes a book, they fill out a leaf and they post it on the tree in the classroom. And so the one on the left is from Miss Kilcoyne's class and, I mean, that's just from the other day. So those are all the books that those students have read just this first year. And the other three trees are in Miss Ryan's eighth-grade classroom. So she started an early fall tree and then a colorful fall, another fall tree, and they just start their winter tree there. One of the comments that, let me go back. One of the comments, early on, I saw Miss Kilcoyne in the classroom. This is all new. These teachers are trying something new, revolutionary. And I saw Miss Kilcoyne in the hallway, said, "How are things going?" She said, "Rachel, these kids are reading like beasts. You know, I can't get them to put their books down." And I thought, "Awesome, so great." The second strategy is to talk less. What you'll see in these classrooms is a lot of Socratic seminars where students come prepared, they go home and they read their texts and they write notes for themselves. And they come and they sit in these Socratic circles where they are the ones in charge of the discussion. The teacher may ask a probing question here and there, but the children are in control of that discussion of the novel or of the informational text that they're reading. And Joanne Klein, I grabbed a little quote that I heard from her. She grabbed me in the hall one day and she just said, "Oh, we just had the best Socratic seminar that's had 12 years." And I obviously couldn't be more excited to hear things like that. The third strategy is building choice into all activities. Students have tons of choice, not just in their novels and their essay topics. You'll see one, the one student on the left, she's actually reading a novel on her phone. And I, you know, I always kind of wondered, like, "Are they really reading?" And so sure enough, she was reading her novel on her phone. But they have choice in so many things that they do, which obviously increases their engagement. The fourth strategy is converting to a workshop setting. On the left, in the green, is a poster that I just snapped from one of the teachers' classrooms. And so they have this up there just as a reminder to students. And in Kelly Gibbons' classroom, a little quote, "And they be productive," because she always starts out the workshop with, "Figure out what your priorities are. You know what goals you've set for the quarter? You know what our goals are for the class? These are all the things that you know need to get done. Where are you? You decide how to spend your time. Be productive," and off they go. And it's just a really great environment.
ROLL is a really good working environment for me personally because not too much pressure is being put on us. We have freedom, but it's guided freedom, if that makes sense.
That was Vanessa. I asked several students to just tell me what they thought of the ROLL environment, so I have a few clips from them interspersed. The fifth strategy, obviously, is integrating technology. And one of the biggest challenges, you know, I found out how many teachers really wanted to do this. Barnes' recommendation is to have at least five computers in every classroom, and I don't have that. And so I'm, you know, scrambling to try and find devices to get into classrooms. I was very lucky, our PTA was very supportive and we did very well with our fall fundraiser. They were able to buy us six Chromebooks for one of the classrooms. And then I pulled a few laptops up a cart for another classroom. And so in most of, sorry, most of my ROLL classrooms, we do have five computers, but any support that you can provide in that area obviously would be very appreciated. But kids are doing amazing things in this collaborative environment where they're working on debates together and posting discussion boards. And you'll see some examples of that a little bit. One of the tools that has become a daily part of ROLL is Google. We use Google Sites and Google Drive every single day with the students. We're very fortunate, through the support and help of Rodney Mack, to have student Google accounts being piloted here at Edison. And so this is just an example of a Google site that Kelly Gibbons created for the entire seventh-grade team. Students have access to this, teachers, our parents have access to this. There's all kinds of resources up there for students to guide them through the work that they are doing in their classroom. This is another example of a Google site, but this is one that was created for Amy Schwartz's eighth-grade class. They, she just posted a link to a BlendSpace, which is an interactive tool for them to see websites and videos on a different topic. So they went and accessed all of these different media pieces on the Victorian era. And then they had to maintain a discussion board, basically, on the Victorian area and what they would like to change about it. And so this, I mean, these comments are incredible. This student is talking about how he would like to reform child labor and working conditions. And I asked Miss Schwartz about this particular child and said, "Would he have said all of that in class?" And she said, "No way, he never says a word." And so for a child to be able to engage to this level and write these thoughtful, brilliant comments about changing child labor, that is the power of Google. And it's so great to be able to have all the kids participating in these amazing conversations with this tool. Here's another example of a debate page in Mrs. Ryan's language arts class. Each group of three students has a debate page. And together, they're collaborating by pulling in resources, articles about the debate that they are going to be doing, so that they can see each other's research and then they build their argument right there on the page. And in the comment section at the bottom, the teacher can give them feedback about what they're doing. So another powerful use of it. Ms. Ryan also posts, and Miss Kilcoyne does this as well, they post essays from this, I believe, and also from, you know, TED Talks, media presentations. And the students either read an article or they're watching this powerful media presentation and then they have a discussion about it underneath where they are commenting on one another's thoughts about, you know, "What does it mean to have grit? And why is grit important?" And so here we have a great paragraph about, you know, a student saying, "Yeah, IQ's important, but if you've got work ethic and you've got grit, you're gonna go so much farther." You know, and so for an eighth grader already to be thinking about that, it's pretty cool. Joanne Klein came in and she just said, "You know what's been transformational?" I just love she used that word. "What's been transformational for me is using Google Docs in the writing process." And she talked about how, right, you know, a student submits the essay online and she's highlighting, you know, the main idea and saying, you know, "Great, great sentences here," or, you know, "You need to expand on this part here," whatever. She can do it right on Google. And she said, "You know, going back and forth with kids 15 times on one essay." And so the power of that and the time that students are putting into their work, it's not just, you know, "Get it done, turn it in, and it's over." You know, they're really going back at it and trying to master their craft.
I like ROLL most because of like the flexible deadlines. That way, you don't have to worry about getting your stuff in like exactly on time. If you don't feel 100% about how well your work is done, you can still like kind of edit it as you go along. But just as long as it's not like three weeks late, you can still like turn it in and you're totally effective.
Love it. And again, it just speaks to, if I don't feel like this is my best work, I can talk to my teacher and take a little more time and do it the way that it's supposed to be done. And I think that's an important message, too. There are researchers out there showing that kids do not benefit from grades like they do from feedback. And it's so important that kids don't see a letter grade on everything they do, but instead they're given comments, like, "This is how you could do this better. Go back at this, try again." And so I just wanted to share a little bit of that with you. So the latter group, the group of kids given only comments, not letter grades, not numbers on the top of their work, those kids are showing greater improvement. And this D emphasis on grading allows students to be attracted to learning for its own sake. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here with this D emphasis on grading. Really trying to not give a grade until we have to at the end of the quarter, but constantly telling the students, "Go back, try again, do it, you know, you can do this better."
I really enjoy ROLL because we can have boundaries set for ourselves and not feel stressed about different things that could get in the way of learning. So for example, say we have a STEPS test coming up and if you worry about passing it a lot, it doesn't help you. Whereas if in a ROLL environment, you have time to think about it and you know that if you don't pass it this time, you can take it again and try again.
Here are just some comments. The seventh graders did a reflection on what they thought of the ROLL at the end of the quarter. And here's some comments from one student. "Feel more responsible, more in control of myself. Makes me want to try my hardest." The teachers are confident in you when you're in the workshop.
Well, I like ROLL because it relieves like a lot of stress because if, instead of having due dates, they have deadlines. And if you can't make the deadline, then you can go like a day past that if you know you're gonna be really busy the night before is due. And also, if you don't like meet a standard on a test, you can just retake it.
Here's some other comments from seventh graders when they did their reflection. "Learning through the change of your mistakes." "Gives them results." "Self-responsibility for learning." "Work hard to get great results." Just love some of the things that the kids had to say about this. I just wanted to highlight that this is a key to our success. I mean, we have amazing teachers taking risks, trying something new, taking the time to develop themselves through reading and reflection, working in their PLCs, coming up with rigorous standards for these children to reach toward and to practice in their workshop and to go back and develop that persistence to their task. So I obviously couldn't be more proud.
It's really independent and it gives us a lot of choices and we're able to like test our means a little bit. It's really fun.
Alright, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bender. This is, um... It's amazing what can be done with just a little creativity and some background sources and, you know, with the change in our classrooms, it's amazing. Thank you very much. Now we have the superintendent's report. I'm sorry, notifications to the agenda. Okay, are there any matters of the agenda for board members which to make? None? Okay, other comments? Pam Nielsen? Please state your name and address. You can find your remarks to three things and, you know, they refer to the board and all that stuff, so.
Got it. Pam Nielsen, 27W 685 Perkview Avenue, Warrenville, Illinois. Phone number, 630-393-412. Just one last little thing I wanted to say. We didn't match it with emails. We know, you know, how us parents feel about B-teams, the benefits in bringing the B-teams back. This discussion is an old one. It's been going on since it was discussed to cut the teams. And it's been going on all the years and just kind of brought back up to a fury the last few months. So tonight, as we all anticipate, the results of the middle school survey and the recommendations to the board, I wanted to implore the board to please make a positive vote on bringing the B-teams back into the budget right away and let the scheduling begin for the 2014 school year. And thanks to everyone involved, all the research, all the principals, all the athletic directors, and everybody involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Nielsen. Now we have the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Entenbrenner. Good evening, board members and staff and community. Tonight, I thought I'd begin the superintendent's report with just a summary of the last two days in the school district, which was our snow days. And the staff that are here this evening had a different work plan the last couple of days. I can tell you, the superintendent's job was ongoing all weekend prior to the last two days, making, trying to make decisions on weather and Mother Nature and how it's gonna affect the operations of the school districts. Obviously, we did have the past two days called off and it was glad to have everybody back today. Very minor facility issues, obviously, when you have very cold temperatures. We did have some minor heating issues in certain places, certain classrooms. We had a few minor transportation issues early this morning as well. And certainly, we'll work to rectify those at the end of the day today and then obviously tomorrow. But whether it is this challenging, it still, you know, does create problems for us, but we did have a very successful day of school today. One thing that to keep in mind for the board is, and the community to understand, that we will make up these days. At this point, we do anticipate ending two days to the end of the school year. Our tentative last day of school is on June 4th, which was a Wednesday. Now with these two days, it'll be Friday, June 6th. Hopefully, we won't have to have any more extended days and we'll be able to finish school at the end of that week. That would be a good thing, that we'll be able to do that. So hopefully, things will cooperate. We will not have to have any further days off of school. One other side note, after discussion at the high school level, we have finals coming up next week. I do know the high school principals had discussions today with their staff and I believe they are gonna leave everything as staff's quo. To my knowledge, they are going to, they worked with the teachers today and discussed it, and they are going to be able to go ahead and with their final schedule as planned. I do know that they were discussing that this morning and to Barnes, I've not heard any differently, they are gonna stick with the original plan. And so therefore, that won't have any other impact to our knowledge of the district's scheduling. And so therefore, I think we'll put a little bit of crush at the high school level, but I do believe the staff, I believe they can make things work between now and the end of the semester. The only other topic I have this evening in the superintendent's report is the, an update to the board on the community engagement, Engage 200, which is ready to launch next Wednesday night, 7 o'clock at Monroe Middle School. I'd like to introduce at this time, one of our co-chairs, who is Scott Brown. He is here this evening, our middle-letting, providing the board an update on the work that the facilitating team's been doing up to this point and we're set for next Wednesday night. Mr. Brown, welcome.
Thank you very much. Well, like Dr. Harris said, I'm Scott Brown. For those of you who don't know, I get my first lieutenant with me tonight. This is my son Sam, who's a first grader, over at Longfellow. Right, get away. I told him I was a good piece of work. But yes, as Dr. Harris was saying, Liz Corrigan and I are serving as co-chairs for the Engage 200 community effort. And just yesterday, we held our third facilitating team meeting in preparation of next Wednesday's first community session over at Monroe Middle School at 7 o'clock. This is just a reminder that the team is consisting of community members from all areas of the district, staff representatives and board liaisons. We're charged with basically making sure that the program runs smoothly, fairly, efficiently, and effectively. There's a saying that we admire the wisdom of those who come to us for advice and that's essentially what we feel the board has asked of us. And so that ultimately is the challenge that we have as a facilitating team and certainly as a community. At the facilitating team meeting, we basically conducted a rehearsal of the proceedings and the content that next Wednesday will entail. The first session will provide an orientation to the participants about Engage 200 and the program with Dr. Harris providing information about the state of the district. Basically, a broad brush and look at the various aspects of the district, including such items as the demographics, student achievement, programs, services, staffing, technology, financing, and facilities. Following the presentation, the participants will work in small groups to reflect on what they have learned from the information provided in the presentation. This will be important, is they will provide input regarding those topics, issues, and questions and the opportunities we'll have to study in depth in subsequent community sessions. Ultimately, it will be very thought-provoking. We had a little bit even in yesterday's meeting and it should be. The State of the Union should evoke both thought as well as some emotion and lead us all to grab pen and paper and not only scratch our thoughts out, but share those as a community. We thought, we think it's important to bring you up to date regarding the communications and promotions. In preparation, we've sent a postcard, which I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have seen and received at this point, as well as included information in our regular district newsletter. We also have sent electronic communications with our most recent being this morning. Our social media presence is increasing on Facebook and Twitter, although I understand that Facebook is not as cool as Twitter anymore. But we learn as we go. This Friday, we actually have a press conference scheduled. I'm sure it will be a packed house. And each of our principals have been working to create a group of individuals from their schools to encourage attendance. Parents and people who do not have children in the district will be participating in the community engagement sessions. According to a report at our facilitating team meeting, the principals are indicating that more than 200 people are expected next Wednesday's event, which is great. It's important to make sure that all of our community is aware that these sessions are open to all residents. Parents, members who don't have children in the district, schools, business owners, everyone is invited and encouraged to attend. Our Engage 200 section of the district website is up and running. By going to the district website and clicking on the Engage 200 logo, individuals will be able to access all the information relevant to the program, communications announcements, and other critical material is located there. By way, we have appreciated both Jim Thromen and Brad Paulson for being the board liaison at the facilitating team meetings. Then we've actually got a couple of students in the audience tonight. I saw Harold Blom, I believe.
Help me out, John.
John.
From East South, right?
That's Tyra's last name. One final comment that I would say, and it's more of a charge to those behind me than it is those in front of me, but, you know, when I think of the main reason why I chose to participate is, you know, I'm one of opinion. I'm the one who enjoys participating and certainly have thoughts to it. But historically, or on certain issues, my lack of participation or effort to engage is ultimately lazy. And I think that's the challenge that all of us have in the community is that many of us have opinion and have thought to it, but that opinion without effort or effort to engage is lazy. And ultimately, that opinion then doesn't count because it's not heard. So hopefully, it will be well-attended. It will be meaningful. But that then is the update that we wanted to share. And certainly, thank you for your efforts in engaging us as we look to engage you as well.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that update. One other comment I just want to share from the superintendent's perspective is, staff as well as all facilitating team members and I know the board as well are working hard to drive attendance to our community engagement session. And we're only gonna be as successful as the amount of people who participate. And hopefully, we'll be packing the house and bringing out additional chairs next Wednesday night at Monroe. And unless there's any questions from board members, I conclude the superintendent's report.
Just, so Wednesday and then the calendar is, there's two more sessions?
There's total of six sessions. Six, yeah, six sessions. Will be January, February, March, April, May, and June, with a report coming back to the board in July.
Hopefully, that, you know, the people that go will generate more and more, you know, and so it doesn't wind down, it just builds up.
We will have to work hard, you know, after the initial push to make sure that the people who do come will continue to come. Or we get additional people, depending on the topics. When the topics are more clearly defined, that may generate a different type of interest depending on what's gonna be discussed at each time, which will certainly promote and distribute accordingly.
One quick question in that regard. The first meeting was a general discussion that'll lay out the topics or those topics will be developed after?
As correct. The topics will be developed that evening by the community on what they want to hear more about. I'm going to share, and with the help of the facilitating team, we had a lengthy discussion about what topics I need to include in the state of the district, you know, presentation. And Scott mentioned the topics that I'm going to share. A couple of slides per topic and then, and then the workshop setting, the community members at the tables are gonna decide, "What do you want to know more about?" And then we'll develop the agenda after that And then we'll develop the agenda after that, after the community tells us what they want to hear more about.
Specifically, Jim, there are going to be some suggested topics, facilities and financing quickly, but we're also then inviting those who are participating in small workshops to come up with additional topics as we decide. So hopefully, by then, we will know exactly what topics need to be addressed in five subsequent sessions.
We'll have more information, you know, as things move along here. And certainly, we'll keep the board informed as we move forward over the next couple of weeks, as that information becomes clear.
So are we not supposed to attend?
Please attend, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Not required, however, but I think it would be a great idea to, you know, have as many board members at every session as possible. And there will be a special seating area, you know, for board members at each session. Okay?
Just following that, I'm going to roll the board again. We need to observe and remain silent.
Listen and listen, yes.
Blood is on our hands.
That's right. I know that's a shift in role. I understand that. But that is the intent here, that board members listen and let the community speak, and we'll have plenty of time to respond down the road as things start to play out.
Yeah, I think the MUCOM, Cashman, through your email in private, described what role these board members play is pretty thorough.
Okay. I conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Okay, we have quite a lengthy consent agenda, and I'll read the items now. Approval of revised policy 5.90, reporting suspected child abuse and neglect. Approval of revised policy 6.250, community resources, persons, and volunteers. Approval of revised policy 3.60, administrative responsibility of the building principal. Approval of revised policy 5.50, drug and alcohol-free workplace. Approval to post geometry and algebra II standards. Approval of the resolution to transfer funds from the working cash fund to the education fund. Approval of resolution to begin the 2014 to 2015 budget cycle. Approval of bills payable and payable. Approval of minutes, December 11th, 2013, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to August of 2012. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified classified and non-union staff. Are there any items board members wish to include in the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So move.
Will go to Mr. Thromen.
Thank you.
Second item is this Cackill. Any discussion on any of the items? I want to compliment the curriculum development staff, teaching and learning staff for the find out they did on the geometry and algebra II standards. I could barely understand them, having been so long since I took algebra II, trig, and geometry, but they appear to be very comprehensive, very thorough, and very much stretching the abilities of our students, and they truly are a challenge. So, thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to call for a vote. Mr. Thromen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Intehar? Yes. Consent agenda approved. We have one action item, and that is the approval to purchase UPS battery backup devices and cooling for this school service center, main service room. Do you agree with your motion?
So move.
Will go to Mr. Thromen.
Second.
Second item is this Cackill.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have just a few questions. I went through in great detail the, that I asked the questions, thank you for the response back. So, just for me to understand, as we bid for things, we receive bids for two of them, and so it's a UPS system, and the cooling for the new server room at the district office, we're going to hold off on the generator? So further notice?
Until we get the amperage increased in that room, and we actually know what the service, the electrical service to that room is, you know, the bids weren't very accurate, and a lot of the vendors weren't willing to bid on it. And so therefore, we're going to come back with a separate bid on that after we get the updates done to the room itself.
And we're recommending we go with the three-phase option on UPS system?
That is correct.
Which type of electricity?
It certainly is going to give us our best reliability, and I know board members are aware of this, that we do have power outages quite often in this part of the district, right here at Edison, as well as good here at the district office, and so, and that creates problems for us district-wide when our main servers are sitting in that building, so this is going to solidify that reliability, this ability piece that we're looking for across the district.
So is the plan to come back with the generator bid sometime before this, so that we can do that?
I'll let this make.
We'll probably have a total amperage and everything moved up. We still have three racks in the basement to move up. They tried, everyone that came in tried to look at both areas and try to get a guesstimate as to what the generator wattage would be. And if anyone noticed, you know, the difference of a few servers on a generator can bump it up from a, use simple numbers, a $20,000 to a $30,000 generator quickly, so we don't want to overbuy for it. So once the room is done, three racks removed upstairs, laid out, and the cooling is in there, that's another amperage. We don't know what that'll bring to it. They said it'd be better to rebid that. So when we did the bid, we did it as three separate parts, so they could bid on all or any, you know, hoping to get a discount if we got all three. But no one would, not once anyone touched the generator, they were very near to give us an accurate bid, instead it would probably be changed, until they knew when the room was done, what the actual electric outage would be.
And I would imagine for that bid, we'd probably get a different type of contractor than the technology for it.
You'd be surprised. Both Tri-Plyte and the other one have those generators also and do that work. They outsource the work where our own facilities people could do the install. It would be, just like this now, we're really just purchasing equipment. We're doing the installs and everything ourselves as we move the room up, but it'll really probably be for the peace, plus we're bringing in new electric from ComEd, so it's kind of on its own separate circuit.
We certainly will do our best to seek out and get the best bid possible. There is some very specialized equipment here, and you know, a lot of Joe vendors out there aren't going to bid on this type of equipment when they know there's significant liability with, you know, a huge investment that we provided in these servers and some of that equipment. So there is some specialization here that's required in the bid spending.
Yeah, just one, the final time it was, the generator and all of the data work was probably going to be a bigger investment than we're seeing right now for this, I would imagine. So, you know, a little bit uncomfortable when you receive a little bit, understanding some of these supply. I'd love to see through what bids, what generator comes around.
We will work hard to get that.
I could share a few materials we could get after, where a person apologized that they didn't meet the deadline. And I actually haven't opened it today because it came to me today. I'll be more than happy to share that with the other members if it comes through, but it was published the same way all the other ones are as well.
We will work hard to, and if we need to rebid to make sure, if a number doesn't come in where we think it should be, then we can always rebid it. But again, time is of essence here, as, you know, as we all know, trying to make sure we get these systems up and reliable and stable and avoid power outages.
Any other questions? All right, then, Mrs. Sender, will you please call it over? Mr. Thromen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill? Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intehar? Yes, motion passes. Now we have an oral report on our virtual learning consortium. Dr. Harris?
Thank you, Mrs. Intehar. And before we step into this first topic, we on the oral report section this evening, we have two items here. One of them is the virtual learning consortium with Mrs. Delacquess is going to update the board on where we are with that. The second one is the middle school co-curricular update, which I know board members in several community here this evening are anxious to hear where we sit with this. But both of these items, I want board members to keep in context in a couple of different fronts. First of all, there are implications in the upcoming budget, in the 14, 15 budget year. We're going to be talking about that this evening. You know, we have a lot of decisions to make as we move forward. What staff's going to be looking for, we're going to be providing quite a bit of information and asking for some direction from the board, and I'll be specific on each topic, but we will be looking for some type of direction on this as we begin to bill our budget and may prioritize our decisions moving from 14 to 15, that, we're not asking for action tonight, we're asking for direction on both of these to make sure that we move forward accordingly. So I would encourage the board to please, you know, weigh in after the information is shared, and certainly, we do have time over the next few weeks on both of these items, but there is, you know, some pending decisions to be made on both of these topics as we move forward. Hence why they're on the agendas. So I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Delacquess, as she will provide an update for us on the virtual learning consortium. Please.
Thanks. I wanted to talk about the virtual learning consortium that you're aware of, that we've been working on. You have two documents. You've got a copy of the PowerPoint, and then you have this rather lengthy document of the strategic plan. The PowerPoint's going to walk through it, summarize what's in this, but a lot of the details that you want maybe also in this other document that you can read at a later time. As you know, we've been working with five school districts to come up with a collaborative online and blended learning program. And I did want to kind of define those two terms, because we throw around what's blended, what's online, what's all of those types of things. They're defined, if you need them, on page four in here. But for our discussions, the online learning is really that happens with most of the instruction happening through the internet. There isn't face-to-face with the teacher, that's online type of a program, and it can happen from home, it could happen during the school day, but it's online and through the internet. Still, a lot of pacing and differentiating that happens. It's not a static thing like you would walk through a PowerPoint type of presentation, but that's online. And then the blended learning that we're talking about is where there would still be face-to-face time with the teacher, and there would be that interaction, but there also would be that online component. And we want to get to both. Right now, we've really been working on that online part, and that's most of what I'm going to be talking about this evening. This next slide is just the districts that we have been working with. And to remind you of what we have been trying to accomplish, is we want to expand educational options and provide different opportunities and different ways to provide these learning to our students. And again, tonight, that I'm going to talk about is beginning steps. This is nowhere near, none of the districts of the five think like, well, we're done. We're building. This is an initial step and hoping that it will expand greatly throughout the time. We've been working with the Evergreen Education Foundation Group. They've worked in many different states and done this type of consortium with many more districts than just five. They've been providing some very great guidance and some, well, you might want to do that, but here's something that might work better. They've been very instrumental in some of the things that we've been doing so far. With phase one, we wanted to develop a mission, what is exactly that we're talking about, and then a short-term plan for some things we want to accomplish by this coming fall, but also making sure that we're thinking about that long-term aspect as well. Because yes, we're talking about courses for this fall, but we want to talk about blended learning, and this may even mushroom past five districts, and how all this might work. So, we had to get together and talk about what are those key issues that we would look at. And each district, if you can imagine, has its own teachers union, has its own lens, this is how we've done it, this is how our board communication happens. All of that type of thing has been a pretty good learning curve for all of us, as we've seen how different districts operate. And then we needed to create a schedule, which was pretty rigorous, because we had said we want to have classes ready by August. And that's really moving fast in the education world to have all of us ready. So then, we started building a plan. And I do want to highlight that when we talked about teachers, we're still talking about highly qualified teachers being the instrumental driving force behind this. They would still be employees of the district. We're not hiring like these teachers outside. And each district is going to be providing proportionally teachers to this consortium. So some of the larger districts, like District 204, would be providing four teachers at this initial stage. We would be doing two teachers at this initial stage, and how all that would work out. And they would still be evaluated by their district's evaluation system, we had to work out how that would all work. And then we also started to look at technology. We have to have a common learning management system across five districts to be able to do this. That is also going to be interesting as we move forward and have all of that work out, but it's going to be important that we do that. We also have to have, districts need to have the devices needing to be able to provide these opportunities, and that is going to need to be planned for. And then we talked about students, and each district is going to have their opportunity to decide what that location would be. Most of us are looking at that that would be flexible. We're going to have some students that are at home, either health reasons or that, that take these classes at home, or perhaps they want to take past what they can in a typical schedule. Other students may not have access to computers and those kinds of things and want to have this class period during their school day. And we're committed to finding that time for them to take that opportunity at class during the day, if that is what they are wanting to do. Each district is still going to follow their own enrollment procedures. You're not going to be enrolling in an outside school district, or you're still going to be a District 200 student or a District 203 student, and how all that would work out as well. So, these are the courses, still in draft, we're still working on, but this, these are the courses that we are predicting for this fall. Algebra, US history, consumer economics, government, geometry, credit recovery, and English classes, and electives such as Mandarin and computer coding. District 200, it depends on how you look at it. You can say we have 52 seats, if you look at the courses being yearwide, or you can say we have 104 seats when you're talking about semester courses. And each district is going to have their proportionate number of students that would have access to these classes. We're still talking about, well, what if, I don't know, some district can't fill all their seats? I don't think that's going to be a problem. But if that happens, you know, could we then buy up some of the other seats to have access for some of our students, and how all that will work? But they will have online registration to be able to do this and have access. So only two of our teachers, for instance, would be teaching those classes. But our students would have access to all those classes, but some of them would be taught by teachers in other districts. So now, that was phase one. We're getting ready to go into phase two. In fact, we're kind of past that, this phase one, I went in December, and we're just working, thinking we're going to phase two. And this is what you'll need to be thinking about, or are you ready to go to that next part? The things that we really need to be working on now are the curriculum adoption process, what are all the standards, what type of curriculum content are we purchasing and creating for these classes? And they would have the same standards as the standards that are here, but it's that delivery piece of that that needs to be created, because it'll be different than if it was delivered in a classroom setting. And then, we want expectations for teaching, and that needs to be uniform across all of the districts, on what that would look like, so we can evaluate that. A lot of professional development will be required. Now, it's a limited number of teachers, so it's not a huge group, but we still have to have quite a bit of professional development on the learning management system, on the instruction, like this way, and on the content that we're talking about. We also want to have an evaluation of the learning management system, and then also, how are we going to know whether we were successful or not? And that's a key thing that we really want to have in place before we go much further. Communication is going to be key on this as well, because as we go through this, we're going to have communication with the community. We need to talk to students. We need to have administration. We need to have staff, and it's got to happen across five different districts. So this is going to be key, that we walk together, but that everyone is informed on this process as we go through. Costs. There's an initial investment, and I think that we're paying upfront for buying some opportunities to be able to do a lot of this later. Granted, what we're doing right now is small, 10 courses, and we expect that to grow exponentially. We have other districts that are very interested in also purchasing seats. We're not doing that at this point, but I think that that is a possibility later, and they may even be, you know, providing some revenue, if you will, back to this. What we've decided so far is proportional costs. So there's going to be an initial buy-in between the five districts that is the same, and everybody from those districts will then have an equal vote on this board as we continue to do that. And I would be the person from District 200 sort of on that board. And then after that, the costs will be proportional. Obviously, a district that has twice as many students as another district would be purchasing more seats, if you will, and there would be proportional costs after this first initial investment, where everyone is putting in the same amount of money from each district. So let me get specific about what that is. We're looking at personnel, because we are looking at, as we phase out Evergreen, which is our consultant, because we're not going to have them forever. We don't want or need them forever. But we want to hire a director for when this gets really big, and that can manage the hiring of some of the additional staff that would go along with this, but especially the enrollment procedures, as other districts will be interested in that. So we're looking at hiring a director and phasing out Evergreen. And that is that personnel cost that goes along with that. We have to purchase content in the curriculum piece. Cost is up there for that. The marketing and communications and all of that, heavy in the front. We're not going to need to do nearly as much of that as we progress and go on after that. The learning management system, that's going to be a fee that keeps coming back, because you need to have access to that. And then professional development is also heavy in the front, but as we expand this, we're also going to need to continue to professionally develop new teachers as we create more courses. And then this professional services, that is the Evergreen consultant fee, and that will be going away. But initially, this is the cost that each of the districts are putting forth and asking this time for school board approval. And 203's board presentation was Monday night, and we're all having here in the next couple of weeks, and then bringing our information back from our school boards. So, what are the next steps? We're recommending, and you don't need to take action tonight. I gave you a lot of information. You'll need to look over that, but it is our recommendation that you move forward and approve the expenses at the next school board meeting. We will have an equal voice in this. This buys us in for the next five years to having an equal voice with this initial amount of money. And then we will continue our work with Evergreen, but we will be hiring a director, phasing out Evergreen, and giving it those jobs over to this director position. At this time, I've given you a lot of information. What questions do you have? What questions do you have?
Can you describe the profile of, probably a few different profile of the students that would be interested?
Sure. There would be some students that are struggling with credit recovery, are looking for another way to get ready to recoup some of the credits that they lost in the English class. Right now, we don't offer Mandarin at all in our district, so if we were allowed that, that's an opportunity that only you could do through this type of process. And a student might decide to do that during the school day and have that be a class period, but they might think, well, I could take all my regular classes and I could do Mandarin. Or gee, I'd really like to be in these three electives, but if I do that, then, you know, and I take Consumer Economics, I can't. So maybe I'm going to take Consumer Economics through this and then I can participate in another elective that isn't online. I know that we've had discussions about some of our students that are very ill and are having to take classes and do homebound tutoring and that kind of thing, and some of these classes would be a better option than doing homebound tutoring for some of that. We've talked, and I know this isn't a large crowd, but for some of our students that are training for the Olympics, that are doing those kinds of things and are needing to have less time that's actually during the high school day and have that freedom to do a class this way. So there's a lot of different types of students that would be interested in this. And eventually, we do see this being at the middle school level and then also doing that blended learning components and things for elementary too. So while I've just been talking about high school, that isn't the end game of what I'm talking about here.
Would it be for homeschool kids?
They would need to still be registered as a student here, but there could be the opportunity that that's one of those, but they couldn't be all homeschool. They might take a couple of classes here, but they have to be District 200 students or within those five districts to be able to participate in this.
And would it be available in the summer?
Yes, not available for this coming summer though. Our first initial is this fall, but we do see this as being something that students could do over the summer and also having some just summer school opportunities that maybe you're really struggling with some of the new Common Core math, like in middle school, and you're wanting to boost that up and be able to take that. I do envision having those opportunities through this consortium at a later date.
I think one of the things, and these are great questions, Joanna, that the potential is tremendous. And Faith said this a couple of times here and I'll reinforce it that this is the beginning steps. There is an initial investment clearly in the beginning, but the potential for what 21st century learning could look like 10 years down the road here is significant. And I do believe too, and I've had conversations with colleagues in other districts outside of these five, if we build this, they will come. I think it's going to get legs of its own over the next couple of years. I really believe that. And at the very least, it's going to provide a wonderful learning opportunity for our students. You know, anybody that's headed to, you know, higher ed, the college and career rating this piece, you know, there isn't a college kid today that doesn't take an online course. It doesn't happen. And any type of professional training that's online, whether it's in the trades, whether it's in any type of community college setting, you know, whatever it may be, online learning is upon us. And I think in the K-12 arena, you know, it's conducive for us to try and provide an opportunity or to build something, especially here in the Chicago area that doesn't currently exist like this. And I think the potential here is, as I said, we're starting out very small, but I think the opportunity here is significant as we move forward.
Yeah, Faith, could you describe how specific courses you would identify the tech courses will select? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that. I know that at one point in time, a number of residents have asked if there were any opportunities for advanced capitalists to take online for some of the, that's what I'm asking, and you have this thought there, but just to tell us why, how these technical courses will work.
And we did wrestle with that for some time. And we are trying at this first venture to have offerings that would appeal to very different types of students. And we felt like we needed to do credit recovery and get that right and have that there. We also want to have something that some districts don't have at all. There was so Mandarin and Computer Coding, it seems like it talked about the advanced placement piece. And that is still on the possibilities, but right now with the timeframe, because a lot of the content is not yet available to be able to do this digitally for some of those advanced placement courses, the timeline of which we need to put this together seemed to be a bigger crunch for a class such as that. But that is, that is still on the shortlist of things that we would like to add. But right now with the time constraints and what teachers, the different districts are thinking would be interested in this, that didn't make the first list.
We have a couple of bullet questions. The, the, talking about new teachers, our teachers, you mentioned the word two, that we would supply two in our district and that would be for the performance of these programs that would be involved. Are these additional or new people that would be engaged or?
Yes and no. We want to have teachers that are here already that have taught, if possible, Mandarin may not be a possibility, but there is another district who already has a teacher that does that. We didn't want them to try to teach and learn content that they've never taught before and do this. So we are looking at existing staff, but they would be, have one period a day that where they would not be teaching a class like they usually would, and that period would be designated to this. That doesn't mean that all the communication with students would happen during that time, not at all. But they would have one period during their day to be prepping and talking and doing all that kind of thing. So it isn't a full day of a teacher. It's one period of a teacher that we would be taking away from what they maybe have done before and putting it toward this. So in essence, it's two periods of teachers. It could even be there having one teacher that's teaching something twice, but we're really hoping to at least bring two different teachers in to expand the professional development, have them talk about it and those kinds of things. Does that answer your question?
I guess if I'm there, you're right. We would have two additional FTEs.
No, they would, they'd be, like, right now, they have how many courses that they teach during the day? They might, they're going to teach one course, it's this course for one period of that day. So it's, you know, two tenths of a teacher. It's not a full FTE because a full FTE would be teach numerous times during the day. They're only going to teach this class once.
But if they were teaching in that period before, who's going to teach that period?
Right, so that one period would be new FTE, but it's not two full-time teachers. It's.
Okay. But again, all right, whatever. Technologically, are we capable, if we have this program conducted in Cleveland South, is, you know, do we have the technical capacity, technological capacity to handle it?
That is, I'm getting ready to start seven-year different committees on all of this. With Communications, Rod's going to be on that committee because there's certain boxes and wires, things that I assume, but I'm not the expert on that, so we're bringing in the tech people to do that. In my initial conversation with Rod, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but we are bringing each district to be in their tech person to talk about that. Do we have enough access points? Do we have all of those things that we need?
If we don't have it, we'll make sure it happens. I mean, if we're going to provide this, we don't know what we don't know. You know, the devices is one thing, but in the access points, as Faith mentioned, bandwidth, we know we've got that. So we're in good shape there, but, because we doubled that recently. So we're in great shape there.
Okay, and then I guess the other overview question, you know, kind of tying to some of the other stuff we're going to talk about tonight too, is that assuming you're on a break-even budget right now and we're going to add, whether it be $88,000 in this case or $180,000 on another issue, does that mean we're taking that from new revenue that we may find or are we taking it out of some other source? Or how do we fund these, this program and/or any other program we're talking about maybe later tonight?
Yes and yes. You know, I think we have to look at what our new revenues possibly are. We may have to do some addition by subtraction and making some priorities in our budgeting process. If this is a priority, if this is something that, you know, the board believes is the right thing for us to do moving forward, then we'll figure out, we'll budget it and figure out how we're going to pay for it. You know, if, there's other topics, next topics, it's going to be a very similar discussion. You know, we also have always the option of fee structures now in this one, but for the next topic. You know, we could charge an additional fee, you know, internally if we wanted to. I would not recommend that at this point, but you know, that is something we could do, you know, to take an online course. But therefore, I think we have, that wouldn't necessarily always cover all the costs. It's not going to cover, you know, $88,000 here, which is what we anticipate our cost being for the initial buy-in. However, I do think, you know, we're able to make some decisions in the budget planning. That's what the staff's looking for this evening as we move forward, whether we commit and sign on with this group to go forward and figure it out for budget planning.
Kind of on that track, I just did some rough math here. It pairs $90,000 as each, and that's the ante to the game to play, so to speak. So call it half million dollars among five schools. Who's going to manage that money? Is this going into some pool and now we're going to have another person responsible for those finances?
Good question, Ryan. I should have covered that. With the intergovernmental agreement that we had prior to this, with Phase Two comes another intergovernmental agreement. And 204 has been housing the money where we put it in and then pay it out too. So if everyone is interested in moving on to Phase Two, there'll be another intergovernmental agreement that comes along of how all the monies would be handled and what if somebody backs out and all of those things have to be, attorneys have looked through it and made sure that everything is okay.
So we would anticipate paying the money to District 204 is where I believe it's going to happen and then they will disperse accordingly based on expenses.
If a student takes a full load in a classroom setting and then chooses to take yet additional course, has any thought been about charging for that since we've already given, you know, they've got their money's worth from it, so to speak?
That is one of the things that we've talked about and if we, we've had initial discussions that if that happens, we'd like that to be uniform across all five districts, that it's not in one district, it's okay, and in another district, it's another additional fee. That is something that we've yet to hammer out, but have talked about.
You know, I, our initial thoughts on that would be is if it's a, you know, if it's a sixth class or seventh class in this case, you know, our initial thought would be that we would ask for an additional fee for that. Now, we have to work with the other four districts on this, you know, to make sure we're consistent, but at least that was our initial conversation.
Maybe for a question for Rod, but does this learning management system exist today?
Well, we're fortunate in District 200 that we haven't launched and purchased a great learning management system. So in our instance, we're not having to like, well, fight for ours because we already have things on this and how we're going to go. Other districts are not all using the same learning management system and there's going to be disagreements about what's the best thing to do. Since we don't have one that's real robust that we're excited about, we're just looking forward. So I don't think it'll be an issue here, but I do think in some of the other districts as there's a switch to a different learning management system, some people have invested in multi-year contracts, types of things with others and have had teachers trained. We are not under that obligation here.
Those programs do exist, but we don't have one here.
Do we have any sense of, so I see the $88,000 as a startup, that's our antec of the game. Do we have any anticipation or I guess you will have exact numbers on what the ongoing costs are that affect the budget going forward?
Right. And there's predictors that I have on both sides that things that are going to go away and things that are going to, where we're going to incur more expenses. One of the possibilities that could even change some of this, if for instance, right now we have this divisible by five, if one of the school boards or two of the school boards decide we're not in, some of these costs are now not divided five ways, they're divided by three or divided by four. And while the number of seats and those kinds of things would then decrease, if you're agreed that you're going to hire a director, you've still got that cost and that's not going to be minimized by three districts versus five districts. So some of that cost could go up depending on what everybody decides here in January. After we've purchased the initial curriculum and content for those courses, we're not, you know, we're not going to have to continually invest that amount of money. But I do think that we're going to then not just have 10 courses, we're going to have more of those. I do think that there will be some revenue gained by either fees that are charged or by other districts that pay in. I don't know what that's going to look like and that may offset a lot of those costs. I'm not giving you a really specific answer. I don't have a really good specific answer of what those costs were. I think that if we continue with the five districts, then there will be a decreased cost because a lot of this is startup and setup and you won't have that per student cost that is as high as it is right now. If we go down to three districts or four districts, then we're going to have a bigger startup cost than what we have currently.
Following those lines, Faith, from what I understand, the next step will be for us to consider what you can go to another intergovernmental agreement for the four districts. At that point in time, it's your lead that will have a pretty good read on what the other four districts are going to do, whether they're going to contribute or not, so we can make a informed decision if there's one or three districts going to have, what we will do or not.
And I think all districts are asking that question. We definitely wouldn't go into the intergovernmental agreement until, but I know that there are other, well, you know, we're busy on our phones, are you in? What do you think's going to happen with it? Because it is going to make a difference for the cost of that. And it's easier to say, yes, the costs are divided by five than it is when it's divided by three and everybody wants to go and everybody else is doing. I think after this initial meeting, we'll have a better read or second of the five to be giving this information session and then everybody is taking a second meeting to actually have action on that. So I think after we've gone through these five districts and everybody's had the first, we'll have a much better sense of what that is, but nobody will be signing an intergovernmental agreement until we know whether it's five, four, or three districts.
That'll be crystal clear after this initial presentation. Everybody's given the identical presentation, you know, they've worked together on this. So 203 saw the same presentation the other night, you know, the other three districts are going to see the same presentation sometime in the next week and a half. So we'll be clear before we ask the board to take, you know, take action on this where, what our costs would be in this initial set.
I think that, you know, this is the education of the future. We have to provide this. I'm a little concerned when we start thinking we need to rely on tuition-based support though, because I think this is part of the public education report, you know, so this is not going to be a supplement of program. I think this would be part of the core breaking. Correspondingly, I think it's, you know, you'll, you know, I want to make sure even today, if we're dropping tuition or, you know, costs like that, that we make sure that we, this is open to all students, obviously, those that can afford it and those that can't. This is even part of the process. So, you know, when I look at the offsetting cost, I think as we look at that budget, we have to do that consideration for the cost.
Right, and we have had several conversations as a group that we want to make sure that even students that don't have access to computers are admitted at home, have access to this during the school day and that we don't want any of these costs to be prohibited or that we would rely on students bringing their own device because some of the students that are going to be interested in this may not have the funds to have their own device. So we've had a lot of conversations about that too, that this is not going to be dependent on student or family income to be able to participate in this.
As you can see, the courses, Algebra One, US History, those are required core courses, you know, that are available for all, you know, required by our kids. When I talked about a fee, I was talking about responding to Jim's question about, you know, an overload, you know, if we have a kid that, you know, has got a full load and then they want to take Mandarin also, that's where the discussion is on that. So that would be only in that unique circumstance, not for the general course look. If it's in lieu of taking US History, just because they do it online, they wouldn't be charged a fee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, my only reaction to that, I don't know if College of the Page offers Mandarin and I don't know whether a sophomore in high school could sign up for Mandarin at the College of the Page if they ever graduated from high school or whatever. But, you know, I'm a little concerned when you talk about a program that's specific, you know, that where there isn't another alternative out there. And I would like to stay with more core breaking, I guess, and, you know, particularly if we're not charging, or maybe we charge for Mandarin or some different technology level that, you know, that might be a consideration because I think there might be other sources for that that should be part of our public process.
We can certainly take that discussion back to the other upcoming discussions and share those thoughts as we work through this.
The class such as Mandarin, we'd really be interested in having it be part of our regular curriculum offerings, if you would, but it's really hard. But it's really hard to find anybody to teach it. And one of the districts already has it as part of the courses that you can take at the high school. So some of it is just expanding the types of courses that we would like to offer within our regular school day, but we don't have the staff or you don't have a larger group enough of students. You know, advanced type of, but collectively across five districts, we would. So it is looking at expanding what our current offerings could be at a reduced cost.
And to kind of build on that, I know there are students who might choose a different language other than what we offer. From what I understand, we're pretty much down to Spanish in French in terms of our foreign language offerings.
Oh, that's true.
German in North Dakota, right?
Depending on the year and the interest.
All right. So if somebody wanted to take Italian, let's say, or somebody wanted to take Czech or Portuguese down the road, this would offer them perhaps the ability to take a different foreign language and satisfy a foreign language requirement, let's say, for college, than having to take Spanish.
As we expand the opportunities, those types of things could happen.
But we wouldn't charge for that because that would just be in lieu of their other foreign language.
Primarily that's been our discussion, yes. But if they were wanting all of a sudden to take ten courses.
Right. If they wanted to take this Dr. Harris said overload. I would hate to discourage that. On the other hand, I can see the rationale for charging for it. On the other hand, I also know that typically, the more technology that's used in teaching a class typically, well, I don't know about teaching a class, but it's cheaper for me to do electronic funds transfer than it is for me to write and check and have a bank process and check. So I would imagine that down the road as we get going, it should be more economical for a student taking an online course than it would for us to teach that student in a classroom with a teacher. So I don't know how we can justify putting a fee on that type of class versus a fee that's actually, versus a class that's actually more expensive for us to teach in a traditional way.
Right. And there's kind of some, it'd be easier to fill the classes because, okay, we only have eighteen students here, right? But seven more from another district that also want to fill those class sizes. But that doesn't mean that every single digital class that we do is going to be full either. So yes on some things and no on others.
No, no. Yes.
These, they'd be graded and that grade would go in with their evaluation. Would they fail it?
And most of these courses would still have a traditional type of a test to be able to prove your mastery of those kinds of things. Because if they're taking it in their kitchen, you don't know who all is helping and assisting and all of that. So we're having those discussions. But yes, still, they would need to prove mastery of those standards. There would still be grades. There would still be ongoing assessments throughout. It's not like, well, hope you're doing all well and we'll see at the end of the semester. There would be progress and monitoring and feedback throughout the course, just like there are our courses that happen within traditional schools and classrooms.
You saw a little bit of an example this evening at Rachel's show here at Edison with those online pages and that. A lot of online instruction has those check-in opportunities. And kids will have to make so many posts and so much dialogue. Or they have to log in at certain times and have discussion groups or chat groups. And that's where the assessment component goes on. That's a virtual environment. That's the learning module that takes place in an online setting. It's much different than a traditional classroom environment. It's a different instructional approach from the teacher. And it's definitely a different learning experience on the student side.
Can you kind of describe though, when we talked earlier, so the child logs in and they turn it on and is someone talking to them? Is it PDFs? Are they just reading?
It's not video of the teacher. You know, like we went and it was a classroom and we took a video and we watched. It's a very different type of thing for the U.S. government, for example. You're not going to listen to the teacher lecture. That's not going to happen. But there would be pieces for them to read, videos for them to look at, discussions that are already available that they were, two experts were arguing on a particular topic or a perspective from history. Then they would blog and write out about their learnings from that or compare events in history and be able to talk about, well, what do you think were the root causes of that? And how did this impact fifty years later policy and how all that goes in? So it would be a lot more responding to different things that are available on the Internet that teaches that same content. It wouldn't be capturing what happens in a regular classroom and you're listening to it and then responding. And students could move through it at their own pace. And you might decide, I'm going to do four hours of U.S. History on Tuesday and then I'm not going to touch it again until Friday. And there will be timelines and things that are due to that. And there are some people that read very quickly and you go through that and look at that. Some people may want to watch the video and the discussion three or four times to be able to understand that. And other people can go through it. A lot of times, students would be given choice. We would like you to know about this particular event. You can watch this video. You can read about it with this text. You can choose to interact through this blog and learn about that. But the end product is you're going to need to be able to create an essay that says blah, blah, blah. And you're testing your own understandings and picking which of those learning modules or types of learning or instruction that you would need to be able to master that. So it's differentiated. It's not this static type of a thing where you would listen to a lecture and then respond. It's creating that content in a totally different way.
And is there, are there different vendors that have these classes?
Yes. And we are not looking at creating these courses from scratch. And, okay, teachers, you go out and find all this. Because there's great curriculum and classes already purchased, already made, already the districts have used and have a lot of success with. One of the great things about having common standards across different states is that we're working on similar standards. And you can have a course across many different districts that is accomplishing the same thing, getting kids ready for the same AP class and exam, getting the kids ready for the same standard tests that they would take. And we're looking at purchasing that. Teachers will still interact with it and decide what that would be. But they're not wanting to be creating all of these things from scratch. We'd be purchasing these.
Perhaps this is one of your seven committees, but it seems to be one of the more controversial topics will be how we pick the students and get the students fifty-two seats. Is that a decision that the source is going to create a set of standards or is it up to each of you in both schools or?
Each district is going to have some of their input into how that's going to happen. I don't think that's going to be exactly the same across all five districts. And that is something that we still need to wrestle with. Students are already looking at what their course selections are for next year. So then we're going to come back with, okay, and what about these options? I think that most of us are looking about that, right? Some of it would be perhaps a lottery depending on what would be interested. And some may be, I think this would be a good idea for you. This type of learning is not for all students. It really isn't. It's expanding the different types of opportunities. I think that some students would be really interested and their families would be interested. And some people are like, well, let's see how this goes. We're not, the one thing we have agreed on is we're not assigning anybody to these classes and saying, this is how you're taking U.S. History. This is how you're going to take Algebra. It would be student and family choice.
Would it really, I don't think we have thought of fifty-two seats.
I really don't think that's going to be an issue at all to get to fifty-two. Perhaps I'll be proven wrong. Certainly, our consultants, Evergreen, are like, really? You don't think they're going to fill? They've been through it before and think we're going to have the opposite. I'm glad I didn't get the opportunity and might have an extra major bid.
One of the things we will do internally to make sure we more both south and north have that little opportunities internally. I'll make that clear in case anybody's curious. So we won't, twenty-six and twenty-six, I'll say it right now. So maybe it's going to work. However, if they don't fill all of them, then the other one can have them. But we're going to use what's available to us technically.
Just so I'm clear on this, the final slide is recommended that District two hundred move forward to Phase Two and put the expenses at the next board meeting. So if we, if the board would support that recommendation and then subsequently that we find out only two of the five are going to participate, where do we go from there?
I would hope that I have a very strong indication by the next time at the board meeting exactly if we're dividing this by five or less on that. We would still then need to come back and say, okay, now the cost has changed. If for some reason that's not there, I'm not going to ask you to approve an amount and then say, oh, oops, it really was hundred and two or something like that. I would have to come back and give you the new figure.
The five superintendents and the assistant superintendents in the comparable positions, we're talking a lot. And we will have a feel. One of the things I know my colleagues are anticipating, okay, how's your board react? They're anticipating that feedback from me sometime in the next day or two to think, oh, that we're having this discussion this evening. That's the essence of working in this collaborative environment with the other districts because everybody is curious, asking the same questions. And we do need to get a consensus to where everybody's feelings are so that we can turn around and say, yeah, we're pretty confident we're in. We're going to move forward so we can. And then it's never true until the board actually votes to accept it. You're absolutely correct. However, I do need to have a sense, Faith and I, where we sit on this. If there are any significant concerns, we need to know it because we need to go back and share those concerns so we can give an indication to the other districts in the same way.
And keeping with that, Mr. Matheson had mentioned, where were these found monies in the budget? Are they, are they going to be able to provide that to us with that plus and minus? To the best of your ability at this point?
Yeah, it's difficult until we actually get it. We're ahead of it here a little bit. However, if we know what our target is here, some of these sources, like for instance, some of the hardware or the software costs, certainly we can incorporate it into the technology budget. Some of the professional development costs, we can incorporate into that too. Which is, yeah. I mean, some of the costs, there's different budgets where we can make decisions and try to incorporate that. So yes, we'll have as best answers we possibly can. It won't all be new money. Some of it might be. The staffing piece that was mentioned, we'll have to make sure we can figure that out accordingly as well. The high school staff, the two FTE, it's not only two people.
Two periods.
Yeah, correct. That's right. That makes sense.
How up in there? Is this a two thousand and fourteen, fifteen plus?
There are some parts that are still for this current school year that are in that. Now, I've already budgeted some of Title II for the professional development. Some of that's going to have to happen this school year. Can't start training teachers next August. The school has already started. So some of these costs and these things, but I have budgeted some of Title II already toward that professional development piece for this.
Maybe in your final report or some presentation, we get to determine what portion this year versus next, whether it's conceptually already funded in this year's budget for the portion.
Okay. Like the professional development part of this, it's totally, I can do that.
Yeah, we can definitely provide that, break that down when we break back a recommendation for the board. So we'll have the detail.
I think it's very, first off, I'm very excited about this as a board. It's easy to get focused on what we do next to Phase Two and what we have to do by August. I think if I look five years down the road and try to push it down to the elementary level, there's so many schools in this area that go into foreign language at the elementary school level. You mentioned trying to implement that in that cost decision, thirteen schools. Having the ability to offer one pre-established curriculum to kindergarten and thirteen different schools to do the cost savings that would incur. Changes the dynamic, changes the potential program offerings for our parents. I know that was an issue that somebody brought up yesterday in page two hundred. So it's easy to get hung up by these immediate things. The value, I think, is way down the road.
Which ties in with my last question. What does Evergreen with their best experience? And what is their experience around the country? And how have they seen districts use it?
There's a rather large group that they worked with in Wisconsin that was a lot to twenty, some districts that all put together. And this board became very dynamic and that direct acquisition became crucial as you're doing with all those different districts on how to do this. And they actually have most of their course offerings then available through online and blended learning opportunities too. So that some of the things like when we were kind of going through all of the discussions with the charter school and some of those courses and all that, those course offerings expand. So you have that option to do that through there. When we had, and we did have a big conference call with the board from this group in Wisconsin of some of their learnings that went through that. And they were surprised, and they're many, many years further ahead than we are, at how many other districts then purchased seats or wanted to have, to be on the board, to pay the amount. And that it just kept growing and people were knocking at the door to be able to do this. Because it's really hard, even for a district as large as District two hundred, to be able to do this by themselves because of all of the different costs that go along with that. There also, Evergreen is really big out in Colorado that have used this and have a lot of intergovernmental agreements to have this happen. And then working out grades, working out teacher evaluations, all of that type of thing. They've had a lot of experience with that. Certainly, the districts that I spoke with in Wisconsin were very favorable about their experience and how they've recouped a lot of the expenses and also feel that they have provided so many more opportunities for their students.
One of the things that's interesting, and I'll just comment on this, that since we got serious about this, the five districts, and became more public, we have had districts around us, one and already we've said no at this point until we get our act together. And then, I mean, there's an interest. There's clearly an interest. Very similar districts right around us that want to know what we're doing and why we're doing it. So I do believe, now, we have to get our, everything in order here before we ever got to that point a year or two ago. But I do believe that will happen.
Dr. Harris, do you need a sense of board to share with those superintendents?
Correct. And we're not going to vote tonight. However, unless there are some significant concerns, which I have heard, there's questions, some legitimate questions. What I'm hearing here, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that staff's going to move forward, we're going to bring back a recommendation for the board to consider then, with the detail, with the financial detail as best as we possibly can provide it, with the commitment that we believe is going to be in the other districts. And we will be asking the board to approve that. I don't believe it'll be the intergovernmental agreement. It'll be the cost to move to Phase Two.
Which will be part of then creating the intergovernmental agreement.
That's correct. So unless there's a significant concern about that, that is the direction I'm looking for this evening from the board. And we will bring that back for further discussion and ask for, you know, action to take place at the next board meeting.
You just made a distinction between two things. The first cost is eighty-eight thousand is funded, is to investigate and proceed in that investigation process. Come August of next year, there's another entire different cost if we start the delivery of the process.
This eighty-eight thousand is some of what's happening this year and also the cost that it would start to, that we would need to do next year as well. So like with the personnel cost in here, we envision that we'll probably hire a director in April and May, that salary would start. But that's also including next year's salary as well. Because it's five different districts putting forth that amount of money.
For the director, but what about the teachers that are going to put on the board?
Right. For the teachers, that two ten, that two periods of teachers, that would not start until next year.
On the school?
Correct. I need to specify whether I'm talking about school years or calendar years.
This is a year and a half cost. That's correct.
Yes. I mean, we're not spending much money here in January. But it's things that we're still going to be doing this year and the expenses that we would accumulate next year as well.
That's the eighty-eight thousand?
Correct.
Okay. So that would include the cost of the teachers that are going to, that are going to contribute to it as well or just the director?
That's just the director cost in here. The teachers wouldn't actually be an additional cost. And the teachers here, you have teachers that are making sixty thousand dollars a year and it'd be a fraction of that. You have teachers that are making ninety thousand dollars and it would be a fraction of that. So it would be different depending on the teachers that you're providing. It would be hard to predict at this point what the. It would be hard to predict at this point what that fraction of that cost would be.
I'm not sure I totally understand what you said, but I, I think in general, I think that, you know, this is the way of the future and I agree with you on that.
There is definitely an initial investment here. There's no doubt about it. And, but the potential upside here is significant. And, you know, getting us going in this direction, which we have not done at all in District 200, is, you know, is significant.
No, I, great job, Faith. And thank you for, I asked a lot of questions that you may not have been prepared for. You know, I get it. I think the year and a half kind of number all in is, is great clarity and gives me, I mean, I support it. I think it's the right move forward.
Any other discussion? Okay, I think we're there then. Okay. Thank you so much, Faith.
Thanks. Our next session. Our next oral report is a middle school co-curricular update. Dr. Harris?
Thank you. As I want to restate, as we transition here, our four middle school principals are here this evening. I know a couple of the assistant principals are here as well. I think it's moral support in the back and listening and taking notes, I'm sure. The board members I know are well aware of the topic here and the middle school principals have put together a presentation. You have a black and white copy of it here in front of you. There were some last minute edits that were done this afternoon. And I'm not going to steal any thunder here. I'll certainly clarify anything that may come up. I know the principals have spent a lot of time over the last couple of months on this and I'll certainly let them go through it. I think we're going to start off with Dr. Solomon, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Thanks for the opportunity this evening. We have spent a lot of time on the topic, not just in the last few weeks and months, but really since we talked about this, some of you that are sitting at the board table from the last time we talked about B-sports. It was a very emotional budget cut back in the day. And so we're going to try to provide you a little bit of history, quickly, I guess, some history, some idea of what the costs may entail. There are actually five of us here tonight, so it's Rachel who obviously is the captain here at Edison, Mr. Bendis from Franklin, Mr. Buck from Monroe, and John Pilkington, my replacement at Hubble for next year. So it's the five principals that are, have been all working on this together. So I'm going to start. We all have a little piece of it. We'll be quick in our transitions with my colleagues are in the front row. So we'll run through this, anticipate some questions, and we build some time at the end for you to do that. So again, thanks for the time. Just real quickly, some of you were, again, sitting at the board table when in 2010, the B-teams were part of budget reduction. I believe March 24th was the actual school board meeting and we finally made that difficult cut as part of 6.7 million that we cut at that time. The line item for B-teams at that point in time was 150,000. You'll see that cost updated, if you will, later in the presentation. These were the three main areas of budget cuts back in 2010, proposed and approved. 25 FTE, 25 teachers. The line item that I mentioned, 150,000 for the B-teams. And we also cut almost a quarter of a million dollars in terms of classified staff across the four buildings. So eight middle school classified staff. Though I don't want to keep going.
Something funny happened here. But just to provide a little context in terms of other opportunities that exist, we currently have three no-cut sports, so any student that goes out is allowed to participate. And that is cross-country, that is available for sixth through eighth graders. Typically, we have between 50 and 125 students running cross-country every fall with just two coaches for those teams at each school. Wrestling, again, 50 to 75 students participate between sixth and eighth grade with two coaches. And finally, track, only seventh and eighth grade participates in track. But we have between 75 and 150 students participate at each school with four coaches, one for boys and girls, seventh and boys and girls, eighth. Volleyball and basketball are the two cut sports that we have at the middle level. We have seventh and eighth grade girls volleyball and there are 15 players per team, so a total of 30 girls playing volleyball. And basketball, seventh and eighth grade girls and boys and 12 players per team. And just again, for context sake, other opportunities that we do have for student involvement at the middle level, there's a 75 to one ratio for intramurals. So for every 75 students, we can offer another intramural for students to participate, which means that every school, we have an additional seven to nine intramural programs, including basketball and volleyball intramurals at each school. There's also 101 ratio for clubs. And the numbers might look a little funny there, nine to 12 plus clubs per, per building, but that's because some clubs get a 20, or a teacher might get a 25% stipend because they meet less often or they just meet during part of the school year because maybe they're coaching another sport. So they just do it from November to April or something like that. And so they don't get a full stipend. So we're able to offer a lot more clubs and those teachers just get a 25% stipend or a 50% stipend, so a partial stipend, allowing more clubs per building. And now I'm handing it over.
Good evening. I get to talk about the fees in District 200, our interscholastic sports. We currently charge $125 per sport at the middle school level. Just to give you another number, at high school, we charge $125 per sport. Right now, we do not charge any intramural fee. You'll see some districts do, but at this point, we do not. I have the charge of calling many of our comparable districts and districts around to just kind of see what other districts do charge. And it varies, to be perfectly honest with you, throughout, even our close districts. You know, 203 is about $60 per sport, St. Charles is about 100, Indian Prairie about 125. Many of our districts charge for actual sports, so volleyball may be 55, whereas football may be 210, whereas boys' basketball may be 95. So some of them actually, whatever sport you play, it's a specific charge. Intra-murals, many of them don't charge a fee and then some of them charge as much as $26 a year. All the intramurals always charged, if they charged, it was for all intramurals. So, you know, whether you did one intramural or you did 20 intramurals, it was always the same charge. All right, there we go. Our current conference that we are in this year is the Two Rivers Conference and you can see who is in that conference. We have three schools from St. Charles, one from Batavia, Geneva has two, West Chicago, and then obviously the four of us. As you can see there, St. Charles, Batavia, and Geneva chose to leave the conference next year. And therefore, the conference will exist with only five, which would be us four and West Chicago. However, if we were to reinstate B-sports, which we, we talked about with them, we would not be able to rejoin the conferences. They have created a new conference, kind of following the Fox River there, the, remember the old Little Cell 7 conference? That's kind of what they're trying to do. And so that's the current state of our conference. And then just to give you an idea of some of the comparable districts, who has B-teams and who doesn't have B-teams, St. Charles, Batavia, Geneva, Indian, Indian Prairie, and they'll all do have B-teams. Some of the other ones around us, Carroll Stream, Lendale Heights, do not. Lombard, Westlake School, Glen Ellen, Glencrest School, and Daughters Grove, Eric O'Neill do not have B-sports, along with West Chicago, Woodfield, Lyle, Glen Ellen, which is Hadley School.
Okay, we sent out a survey to a lot of middle school families. And we had 779 families respond. It's out of approximately 3,300 possible families in the district. It could have been a little less than 25%. Of those 779 respondents, 91% supported adding B-teams to girls and boys' basketball and volleyball. 79% of the respondents supported increase of athletic fees to add B-teams. And would like to note that we did not indicate what that fee would be at the time. It was just a generous support. 79% of respondents to let us put an extra fee for that. And also 83% would support adding a $10 intramural fee, which we do not currently charge if we were to expand intramurals. 83% of them would support that. We would like to present three options to you, Snipes. Option number one, we maintain the status quo, meaning that we would not reinstate B-teams sports. This will allow us to further review the cuts that were made in 2010, also determine our conference affiliation issue, which we'll outline a little later in the presentation, and also consider expanding, possible of expanding our, our current intramural programs. Option two would be to reinstate B-teams sports the way it used to be, the way we reinstated before, raise athletic participation fee for all athletes, obviously cover the cost which we're willing to face. Option three would be to reinstate our B-teams also with additionally adding soccer and boys' volleyball and which obviously will also increase fees for that as well. I'd like to go over the options now in more detail. Option one is maintain the status quo. There are pros and cons with this. Pros are the consideration of all 2010 budget cuts for potential reinstatement, meaning that if we were not to reinstate B-teams sports, we could again spend more time looking at other possibilities for, than we could reinstate some of the budget cuts as far as FTE and other sports for middle school programs. There is no increased cost to the district without reinstating B-teams sports. Obviously, there's no increase in fees for parents. Some of the cons are that 91% of our survey respondents did say they would support reinstatement of B-teams. Obviously, overwhelming support for that from our 779 respondents. Minimum of 50 students per building are unable to participate in these cut sports, so we anticipate approximately 200 students will be able to participate in, or will be able to participate in our sports programs. And also the cons is evaluating the old conference affiliation issue that we have, trying to figure out which conference will now belong to because of the dropping of B-teams sports. We'll outline that a little bit later. And obviously, we have scheduling concerns too with the big length of the year. It's go time now for scheduling and so that would be a concern as well. Option two would be to reinstate B-teams as it was before. Pros are that again, now we could have the extra 200 students be able to participate in our sports programs, 50 per building, and also is preparation for high school sports. Another high school, I'm not sure if we're supporting much in support of that. Cons are will be the additional cost, the lack of facility, facilities to accommodate our B-teams, again, having to coordinate all the schedules for their role programs, our B-teams sports, the additional games, as well as the part of district programs. Our conference affiliation again is uncertain, so that's questionable at this point. And then also the increased fees to all participating families as far as our transportation costs of renewing back B-teams sports, officials, coaching stipends, uniforms, and the additional cost of the equipment.
Okay, so I get the pleasure of talking about how much all of this would cost. And luckily, Rachel had an advocate when we met to figure this out for everybody. So the, the coaching stipends are obviously the biggest item on, on this slide here. The six per building with an average of just over, we tried to average because stipends are based on experience, you know, that you have in that position. So we averaged it to just over 4,000. The officials, we would have approximately, and again, because of the lack of our conference affiliation right now, we had to approximate many of these numbers. So current, you know, that 140 dates is if we had seven home games for each of these sports, we have to have officials for those sports. That would be where we came up with the 8,400. We need people to work at the games. That's where we came up with the 10,500. The original cut included an assistant athletic director. That person helped with scheduling and supervision of the additional dates. In lieu of adding that stipend back, we explored the option of just adding an additional supervisor to the dates that we would have. That's where the 5,250 comes from. Just to give you an idea, that's probably a quarter of what it would have cost to add back the assistant athletic director position. Transportation costs, of course, would increase as we would also, in keeping with, you know, increasing our, our home dates for officials, we'd also increase the number of times we'd have to move or transport our kids. And then the uniform, that figure down there is kind of off the charts. It seems to have, some of the slides have been confused in translation, but many of us were, you know, in lieu of replacing our uniforms, we just, you know, we had twice as many now, so we've just been replacing uniforms that are, you know, need to be taken out of cycle with the old B-team uniforms. So we really, we don't have, many of us don't have uniforms to, for all these sports anymore. So we'd have to replace those as well. The total of that, for some reason, didn't show up on there, but the total for that is $162,746. So this is the way we came up with that figure is in the last school year, we collected approximately $140,000 in athletic fees divided by the per athlete, paying athlete. It came out to, we had 1,119 paying athletes last year. The addition of B-teams would, or this is what it would cost to add B-teams, I'm sorry. The addition of B-teams, we'd have 250, approximately, you know, we had 200, I'm sorry, B-teams students participate. About 75% of our athletes are paying athletes, so that's why we, you know, reduced that number to 150, 150, we times that by our current athletic fee, subtracted that number from the reinstatement costs, and then added the, the paying athletes to that other total, to the 1,119, and then divided it into the remainder there, which if, if the option is for the student athletes to pay this, we would have to increase the cost by $113 per paying athlete. So that wouldn't be just for the kids playing basketball and volleyball, that would be for all paying athletes at the middle school level. So cross-country, wrestling, track, they would also have to pay this amount as well. So that's if we just, if we did B, B-teams sports, so obviously then the, the final fee there, $238 per sport. If it went to all of the athletes. Okay. Option three was to add B, bring back B-teams and as well as soccer and boys' volleyball. And the reason these two sports were brought up is that there was interest in these two sports. We all have interest in these sports at our schools. I, I think most of us now are running multiple intramurals for soccer at all, at all four of our schools. And this was also part of the survey and there was a, a high number of, a high percentage of respondents said they would be in favor of adding these. In addition, the conference that we were exploring joining has boys' volleyball and they basically let us know that they're not interested if we don't have boys' volleyball. So that was one of, one of the other reasons that we put that in there. The pros to this is that we have more student participation. The B-teams sports bring back approximately 50 athletes per building. This would bring back another 40 for soccer and another 48 for boys' volleyball. And then again, the same as before, this preparation for high school. The cons, of course, is that this is an even greater increase in the cost, the lack of facilities to accommodate all those things, just like John pointed out in his part of the presentation. So just to give you an idea, if we, if we did this currently, like at Franklin, we have our one competition gym and then a small gym. And at the winter months, wrestling takes the small gym, so we would have to rotate in the morning and in the afternoon. We already rotate the two grade levels in the morning and afternoon. And now basketball would rotate with splitting the gym in the morning and afternoon so that seventh grade, for example, seventh grade A and B teams would practice on half of the bat, you know, half of our basketball court in the morning and at eighth grade would go in the afternoon and they would rotate. rotate. The, again, conference affiliation is uncertain, and challenges that we have to schedules, and then, you know, the increased fees to all participating sports, transportation, so on and so forth. This is what that would look like, that would increase the, that would double the stipends, so it would double the cost of that to two hundred thousand. The officials, so, you know, that number, we need two officials for basketball, and then one official for volleyball and soccer, so there's, it's not an easy breakdown just in your head. And again, with the game workers, it's also, the reason the numbers aren't just doubled each time is, for example, in soccer, we wouldn't need game workers there, we would need one official to manage that, whereas, and then volleyball, volleyball is too for that. The supervision, again, we'd look at doing that, as opposed to bringing back the assistant athletic director, obviously there'd be increased transportation in the final number, and the uniform cost would double to twenty-seven thousand, that fell off the screen as well, and the final number there would be three hundred thousand, three hundred seven thousand five hundred seventy-eight for that. So we, the estimated fee increase, again, we follow the same formula as before, I think I need to read all of these numbers to you a second time as to how we did that, and certainly we could answer questions about that. The big number, you know, the primary number at the bottom is if we put this cost on all of our student athletes, the athletic fee would go up to two hundred and ninety-two dollars per sport.
We went through the numbers quickly with you, and again, as Dave said, we'll certainly be able to try to make some sense of that for you. One last, there's really two slides here, this one and a summary slide. This has been a difficult conversation for us as well. I go back to twenty-five FTE on the slide that I started with you guys with, we made some significant reductions years ago at the middle level, and many of the things that are listed here are things that were part of that large budget cut those years ago. So as we look at what to do with esports and this particular issue in isolation, we do just want to keep in front of the board, and the public for that matter as well, the other kinds of things that we wrestle with on a daily basis inside of our buildings. And as you can see, and many of our parents perhaps that are in our audience or have been passionate about this, we have some very high class size at the middle level, particularly in the area of math, which has been problematic as we work through the Common Core, Language Arts as well, some of our core content area class sizes are up there. You've heard a lot tonight about technology and 21st century skills, and how we get to the point of providing technology to all of our students, what those costs might look like. Also, as we increase technology inside of our buildings, the ability to not only integrate that technology, but all the professional development that goes with that integration in our classrooms, how to instructionally support the technology that is in the hands of the teachers and the students. Obviously, reading and math continue to be very much on the forefront as we delve and dive into Common Core in its fullest this year and next, and so again, as we look at support for our teachers, which then bleeds down to support for our students, looking at people to go in and help in those reading and math classrooms. Again, as part of budget cuts, we don't have curriculum coordinators at the middle level, we don't have department coordinators, we don't have department chairs, we basically have a principal and assistant to supervise and coordinate and instructionally lead all of those curriculums, so certainly curriculum coordinators are something that we continue to wrestle with and how to monitor. I know Mr. Farley's got a big facility, capital development kinds of things that are also on your plate or will be on your plate in the future, so facility improvements are always on the mind of at least three of my colleagues, I can honestly say it's helpful, we don't get too much attention there anymore, and we're thankful for that. And lastly, again, as you listen to Faith, and all of the things that we do going forward, our profession is changing, our kids deserve our best in our continued development as professionals, whether it's virtual learning, or it's devices, or it's professional development for us as instructional leaders to our teachers, that professional development is a big piece. So when we look at all these things in the larger picture, what you'll see on the next slide is, I guess, our best estimate, and that is, one of my most favorite parents is still sitting out there with her esports on her chest, and has been the champion of this thing all the way through. It is absolutely not that the five of us are not in favor of opportunities for kids. Anyway, we can, we have kids that come into our office, can we have a ski club, can we have this, can we have a skiing club? Never do we try to not provide and promote and put into place opportunities for our kids. Our difficulty with this one is looking at, as I said, in isolation. There are so many other considerations that we would just implore the board to look at all of those, again, and not just in one capacity. So again, that's our kind of final statement to you guys, at this time, you know, we, we look at instructional needs as very vital to what we do. Our first charge as building principals is instructional leadership, it's not that we aren't in favor of esports and all that goes with it, we are concerned about costs as you are, you've heard a presentation tonight about something else that you're going to have to figure out to wrestle with from a financial standpoint. So at this point in time, maybe we're taking the backwards way out, we're just strictly asking that the board and the community look at all of our budget issues in totality before we start adding something back. That's the conclusion of our formal presentation, and I know my colleagues would be happy to answer questions with me as we go forward, won't you, wouldn't you?
Thank you to all the middle school principals for sharing this, some of the detail here, and I want to comment too, from my perspective as superintendent, you know, when those decisions were made four years ago to make those significant cuts, we're talking specifically here about the middle school level, none of those are easy, none of them, none of them were good decisions, they were the less bad decisions, and those of you that were involved know exactly what I'm talking about. And so therefore, when we do talk about opportunities for kids, you know, we have the curricular needs, we have the co-curricular needs, one of the things that we constantly work with as staff is chasing revenue, okay, looking at options. That's why the fee scenarios were put into play here, to, you know, share out what the actual cost would be if we were going to reinstate something. Now, we also could go somewhere in between, we don't have to go all fee, we don't have to go all district budget, you know, we could balance that out, we could try to come up with different scenarios. I'm certainly curious where the board, you know, comments are on this, we've provided a lot of information here, but the board really needed to see where the current program sits in co-curricular, but also keep in mind, I do believe if we were to, if I would have went to the middle school principal and said, hey, here's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, okay, which is the cost here to re-implement this, we would have been talking about some other things on that list and not necessarily, you know, B-team. And I'm a true, and I know they've shared that with me repeatedly over the last several months, however, it doesn't mean that all of these items, including the B-team sports, are not important. So if the B-team sports is something we want to re-implement, I absolutely would encourage the board to consider a fee change of some type, I wanted you to see the whole number and to help us lead through the discussion, certainly open it up for comments and questions at this time, and again, as I said earlier, I am looking for correction here for various reasons, obviously to move forward in our middle school co-curricular scenario, but also to prepare budgets and fee schedules, as you know, we'll be bringing forth to you in the next couple of months at all of us. So I'll leave it now open for discussion and certain comments to report.
Who would like to start?
I'll start, since I think I've been the most vocal board member on this year's group. I think emotionally, it's something I want to do, but personally, I've been, I've been on a, played out a meeting, I've been cut, I had to go cut either girls, so I know both sides of it, it was a lot of good. You know, it's easy, I did the thing, I didn't appreciate the complexity of the issue when we talked about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, just one point of clarification, a hundred and forty-three thousand, it was a recurring cost every year.
Annual cost.
Keeping, keeping the fees the same. So a couple of questions, for the kids that get cut from boys and girls basketball in Hubble, what do they want to do now? One of my questions is, if those kids go into other co-curricular activities, and add the B-team sports, are those other activities going to suffer substantially?
I knew they were going to make the old girl come up here and answer these things. Right now, if, if and when tryouts occur, I don't make the A volleyball or basketball team, I have many options intramurally, nothing else interscholastically until the next sport is offered. Again, I think it would be fair to say, and we didn't really go through our specific intramural numbers, but all four of our schools have a lot of kids that participate in intramurals. When we made the cut years ago, the idea was that the Park District would pick some of that up, that didn't happen for a variety of reasons. Coaches, facility, again, some of those cons that you guys dealt with, I mean, even tonight when we all pulled in for tonight's meeting, you've got a whole litany of people coming into Edison for Park District. All four of our buildings are heavy use for community programs. So those options are there, but interscholastically, it's limited without the esports, there's no question about that. In some cases, in some years, we have run right after selections are made volleyball, we've run an intramural volleyball right after that. At Hubble, which is the only one that I can speak for, we have not then consistently had enough kids to run the intramural volleyball to even continue it. We might put something else in, in its place, but the students that have been cut, if you will, in years past, when we run intramurals right after even boys basketball, it's very hard for us to fill that. And I think some of that's just the emotional, hey, I didn't make it, I'm going to go find something else to do, and most of our kids do, but the, the options in terms of interscholastic without the B level, there's no question, there's nowhere else for them to go, to answer your question.
So I guess that's my question, is for those kids that don't make the B-team, and then go, don't play intramurals, but they go into another team, like Sage Group or some other show choir, whatever it is, if there wasn't, if there was a B-team, but those other programs suffered, impacted by the lack of student enrollment?
Mr. Bendis?
I'm not the old girl. We, I think, you know, boys basketball, I mean, so it's different per sport, you know, boys basketball, some of those kids end up wrestling. So would our wrestling program be hurt if we had a B basketball team? I'm not sure. It might be a couple of kids that, you know, would have stayed in wrestling and not gone that, and each of our schools have a different number of kids in that. Volleyball, the kids could do cross-country, I know at Franklin, we have almost a hundred and thirty kids participating in cross-country, so I don't know if it would necessarily hurt that sport. Girls' basketball is different because there's not another sport opposite it. In terms of our clubs, you know, again, I think it would depend on the season and what's going on, and when each school runs their, you know, their school play, or when they do, you know, any of the other, other activities that we have involved, so that, that one, I think would be hard for us to answer. I do think that there is that possibility. The thing that would hurt those other programs would be the loss of facility usage in some cases, so we might have to reduce winter intramurals, for example, because there would absolutely be no gym space unless we started practicing in the evenings, or held intramurals in the evenings, which, you know, obviously we're not going to do that. So I think that's where we would have the biggest strain on us, is just the limited facilities that we have, that might end up costing, you know, into reduction in options or opportunities for kids.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a question as to the last thing you made? So I think what I heard you say is if we re-implement B-team, which would be basketball, how many students would have twelve at your school?
We would probably, currently, you know, when we did, when the budget, those budget cuts came, we made a collective decision as a group that we would keep a larger number of athletes than you normally would, so for example, you know, Rachel put out there that we'd have fifteen volleyball on a team, well, that's a, that's a large, like, for example, the schools from Geneva and St. Charles come to our schools, they have ten, so we would probably go to twelve and twelve, so it would be an increase of nine students per level, per grade level, so it'd be eighteen volleyball students, and then basketball, currently we keep twelve, we used to keep ten on the two teams, so it would go from the current twelve to probably twenty.
Okay, so you're going to, so for boys basketball, you're going to essentially increase from fifteen students currently to twenty-four students total?
That would be girls, but girls volleyball would do that.
What was basketball?
Basketball is currently twelve, roughly twelve, some would go to ten. You'd probably have ten per each team, so it'd be eight students per grade.
Okay, so you're going to increase for eight students, but in order to do that, as I understood what you just said, would be sacrificing intramural time in your gym, and impacting, how many students would that impact? And I'm trying to balance the students more for...
You know, I think the challenge for us to answer that definitively is that, you know, I know exactly how many kids we keep on our interscholastic sports teams, intramurals are, come when you want, you know, so some days I look out and I'll see, you know, like, when we have soccer and flag football in the fall, I mean, it's wall-to-wall people on some days, and then other days, it's half that, you know, some days we have eighty kids out there, and then other days we might have fifty, depending on the weather, depending on, you know, what's going on with all the other activities our kids are involved in. So it's hard for me to give you a specific number to that, but just that it would be, you know, especially in the wintertime, you know, when there's, you know, when we don't have any outside activities.
I'm just trying to quantify the number of students, because I think, I think to sacrifice, I think we need to keep in mind, let me just say that, to sacrifice that, let's say fifty students would have to make to benefit the eight students that we're going to be adding to this, to the, yeah, eight, eight additional students to the team.
Per grade level.
Okay, so sixteen.
Would be per grade level, per gender, so there'd be thirty-two kids for basketball, and then sixteen for volleyball, so that's, or eighteen, yeah.
We had it on the slide.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the numbers as they go.
I've got a couple of questions, we talked about two hundred students, or the participants, so if a, one student is a B-team on, on two different sports, that's one student that, you know, again, involved with a two sport, would be affecting a hundred students, correct? Fair statement?
If, if, some of the kids who made B-team...
Double B-team?
Yeah, oh, yeah, in the, in the first scenario, in option two, that would only be for the girls scenario, because we currently don't have the boys volleyball, but, but yes, it's true that some of the girls that made the volleyball team, the B-volleyball team, would also make, probably make the basketball team.
Okay, if we, if we increased the, so literally, the two hundred, the hundred and thirty thousand is about eight hundred of that, if you want to call it, seven hundred something like that, two hundred students into a hundred and thirty thousand. But, you know, I, I, it's hard for me to, to look at the numbers on this, I think there's a lot of other aspects of B-team sports that are, you know, sports are general, are, you know, and I'm disappointed here that the intramural program drops off and doesn't provide a team on something on the road. on something on the road. You know, it's a tough decision. I understand, we're talking about all these costs, you know, if I were to look at the mandate that the community has given us, and, you know, the basic statistics, and I look at $150,000, you know, I'm having a little trouble saying, you know, we serve the community, and, you know, and that mandate is there, and, you know. Then when I look at 200 students, or maybe 100 students that are in double B team, or whatever it is, you know, that troubles me a little as well. So, you know, I, I don't know where on that yet, but I think, again, the presentation has really been enlightening in helping that process, but, you know, I don't know. Is this an attempt that we're going to make a decision tonight?
There's no urgency, however. I would just say, you know, it, there's two moving factors. One's for that, is to schedule and figure out what we're going to be doing in those three activities, and the clock is ticking there, because we do schedule right now, and that is in play. Number two is, this is the budget scenario, for district staff, to, you know, depending on where we sit, you know, do we increase our fee schedule, do we, you know, start to make some other decisions along with, you know, other budgetary considerations as we move forward. So, you know, that one's not as urgent tonight, as it probably is saying what the principals trying to make decisions, to get schedules put together for next year. That is more critical, and the longer we wait on that, the more challenging it's going to be, you know, if we do decide to add those other teams back, regardless of how we pay for them.
We would agree that that is definitely a complex situation to analyze, you know, bringing up the emotion of, you know, wanting to provide, I mean, we would all tell you, like Dr. Sullivan said, you know, we all support adding activities for our kids. So it's just, obviously, the situation, the scenario is not as easy as a yes or a no, in service teams.
You know, one of the other things I want to clarify, and I think Beth Sullivan touched on it, Brad kind of alluded to it too, there is a definite difference between an interscholastic experience and an intramural experience. There is a difference, lots of differences. And so there is a philosophical, you know, direction here that's being discussed as well, I mean, that can be considered, I should say, as well. And, you know, it's just a different experience, I don't know how else to say it. I mean, that competitive nature at the interscholastic level is different than intramurals. I'm not saying we don't have competitive intramural games, I know we do. But it is different when you're playing, when Hubble's playing Franklin, and, you know, then Hubble Kids playing Hubble Kids in intramural basketball. It's different. And so therefore, there is a philosophical decision here, you know, and play as much as a financial one, or as a program.
I was going to say, one kind of follow-up to what I just said, and I guess we're entering into a community engagement program starting next week, and if we got a clear mandate to 71% or whatever the statistics were, I would surely have trouble not trying to fulfill that. We serve at the, at the interest of the community, and I think that, you know, in relative terms, $150,000 is maybe not going to change the world to whether we can, you know, repair a building or not. So, you know, I, again, I'm not quite there yet, but I think that I'm, you know, I'm listening to what the community is saying, we've gotten multiple emails about it, and, you know, and I think in relative terms, this will not prevent us from fixing the parking lot and we won't go south, it will, you know, and so on. So, you know, maybe this mandate is something we have to listen to, you know, as part of that whole process, you know, I'm leaning to that direction, will be my comment.
You know, there's two questions here too, and we've alluded to it here in the presentation. One is, do we want to add these programs back, or what scenario? And then number two is, how do we pay for it? Do we pay for it on a district budget? Do we increase fees, you know, partially, all the way? What do we do here? So I would be curious where other board members are on those two questions.
I'm not so sure of the mandate here, there was 3,300 surveys, 3,300 families were surveyed, and we got less than 800 responded, so it's one out of four.
Remember that when you talked about the engagement?
We got one out of four, specifically asked middle school parents. Having said that, I recognize the value of B team sports. At the same time, like all of us, I'm conflicted, because we're talking about perhaps $168,000 that could be financed by our budget, as opposed to increasing fees. And we weren't able to fund entirely the technology budget that we had proposed and adopted three years ago, for this year. In fact, we were, we was on $50,000 short, and we got $300,000. Based upon our meeting yesterday with facilitating team, when we looked at the charts for future expenditures towards new technology, we're protected not to be able to spend what we did it to for the fourth or fifth year of our technology program. So, $168,000 or $150,000, $135 million budget, it doesn't sound a lot, but not finding enough money to pay for the technology, even though we all agree we are so desperately need and so is supposed to. And Beth Sullivan pointed out the number of teachers we lost, and some of the other things we lost four or five years ago as a result of the budget cuts, and those aren't being restored. So this is not an easy decision, and I do acknowledge, we are engaging, about to engage on community engagement process, and perhaps we will get some meaningful feedback from the community. And what their priorities are from all of the community, even those with residents who don't have children in these schools, or they have the security passing and stuff. But I recognize at the same time, some need to move this process along. Personally, I guess I'd like to see, perhaps, some alternatives to what expenditures we would go to B team sports, to increase the fees, not to the full amount, to some intermediate amount. I wouldn't personally want to charge any family more than $150,000, who already have top end, compared to some, like, here in school, there's bits. I also would consider charging perhaps $10 for every new participant. There is some expense to be carried by providing intramural sports for kids, facilities fixed, supervision, and so forth, and that could automate some of the costs here as well. I hate to duck the topic tonight, but I'd like to see some of this additional information, so I can start to weigh in, other options now, I'm troubled by a lot of the choices we're going to be making, I want to make sure that I'm comfortable with the choice I ultimately decided on.
The conference that you're considering here, that they would accept this, is there only one choice of one conference to go to?
Oh, please reach out if you so far.
Choose a mic, please. Thank you.
All right, so now I get to go with Rachel, you're next. We've only, we reached out to that one conference, because it is close, and so we sent a formal letter saying, you know, our situation, and what would, you know, they think about that. And so, like I think Beth said, you know, boys' volleyball was kind of the deal killer, and so, but, you know, our whole thing is, if B or no B, then we know, and then we can kind of, you know, go out and talk to other ones. And informally, we have, you know, principal friends in other districts, and we've said, you know, I know our high school just went to, you know, had Naperville come in, so would that be something that we could go out and say, you know, would that, would you guys play us, and things like that, with the B sports? So now, we don't, you know, most of them are going to say, if you have B or you don't have B, they're going to do it or not do it. So that's kind of what we know so far. So we're kind of waiting to know, are we going to have B, and then, okay, let's go out to those districts and say, can, you know, can we have a conversation about that? Or if we don't have B, you know, go out to those other ones and go from there. So, and then if it is a volleyball thing, then we come back and we say, can we, you know, do one sport, and, you know, it's close, that's the biggest, that conference that we showed you, you know, the transportation cost would not be astronomical, so.
Do you think there'd be enough kids to support the volleyball team?
You know, I think it depends on the building. And what we've found here at Edison is that while we had enough students possibly go out for A and B girls at seventh grade level this year, we only had a very small number of girls go out for eighth grade. So we would not even have been able to field an eighth-grade B team with the number of students that expressed interest in volleyball this year. So that was our experience here. Did anybody else experience it?
I think some of that is because, you know, you're... Some of that is because when you know, it's only A, you know, for example, I have an eighth-grade daughter, she's not going to go out, because she knows she's not going to beat up, you know, those 10 girls. Whereas if it's 20, I might go out, I might drop, because I have a good shot of making it. So I think there's some of that. I would think we have, I love to play football, then we have boys' volleyball, and they have, you know, plenty of kids, and it's a different kind of student that, an athlete that kind of plays those sports. And so, you know, a lot of basketball players, you know, jumping and things like that with volleyball, so it's, I would, I would, I don't know what you guys, but, I mean, we have a big school right now, you know, middle school, so with 800 some kids, and I have plenty, plenty of students here.
Yeah, and I would just add to that too, I think that the conference affiliation we can deal with, if nobody accepts us, we will compete amongst ourselves, our district 200 schools with some, what you would call, independent schools, the West Chicago's, there's other people out there that are kind of onesies twosies, if you will, that we can compete against. There is some thought, as we've kicked around the conference thing, even with our athletic directors, that year after next, we might want to more align with what the high schools are doing, and Dr. Ayers has some interest in that as well. Then you would have 612 conferences that would look similar, in terms of who we're competing against, middle school and high school. That would be year after next. So the conference affiliation thing, we can deal with, we really can. The volleyball and soccer are just, continue to be two areas that we hear a lot of feedback from our stakeholders, from our constituents. And certainly, in some of our buildings, you know, not to stereotype, but the boys' volleyball success, particularly on the south side of town, always drives some south volleyball. North has been in the same position, that ebbs and flows. Soccer, for sure, intramurally, is always very, very popular in many of our buildings, probably all four of them. So I think, you know, we can deal with the conference affiliation. The other thing I would say too, and just to reiterate, if money was not an object, we would not be here. That would not be a question. And you all make so much money in this job called School Board, that I feel bad that you are continually thrown all of these issues that are all vitally important, in terms of how do we balance all these things that parents and kids in our community want with costs. And again, if you took five principals at this point in time, and you said, here's $160,000 divided by four, we could be very, very creative with that, for lack of a better term, $40,000. B sports would certainly be a consideration, absolutely, because we know the value, we know what it does for our kids. In our jobs, as instructional leaders, as people charged with the teaching and learning of individual kids, preparing them for high school, that has to be a big piece of how we make decisions. So in our shoes, when we look at that line item, though 160 seems very inconsequential, there's a lot of creativity in terms of what we could do with that 160 across our four buildings. And again, that's just the hard part. You know, I don't, I don't wish you guys anything but positives if you look at wrestling with all these budget issues, because it's tough. You know, you can't say no to virtual learning, it's, we know that's where it's going. You really can't say no to B sports either. But, again, I think our, from the very point at which this started, it always has been, let's look at everything, let's look at the whole, not just pieces of that pie. And, you know, we appreciate your, you know, you guys giving us the time to try to explain what it looks like, and if you guys have questions about the numbers, or, you know, again, some of the intramural numbers are moving targets, because we'll have kids that'll show up, yeah, I really like to play intramural basketball, so I'm there every day. And for other kids, because of other things they're doing, they might be there one day a week, instead of three or four days a week. So it's a little hard for us to quantify some of the intramurals, the athletics we can. But again, if you need more, Jim, more information, you know, clarification of numbers, that we can get Dr. Ayers to meet with you guys, we'd certainly be glad to, glad to do so. Just appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about it.
Let me comment briefly, you know, Jim, you mentioned, you know, talking about the 150, you know, because that's what the high school fee is. So if we brought the middle school fee up to high school, I just did this quickly here, okay? So I'll need to have this verified. But if we increase the middle school fee 150, just to make it consistent with the high school, that's approximately 25%. So if took 25% of the cost, that would generate another $40,000, okay, in additional fees. So therefore, we would be talking, you know, an additional $120,000 into the district budget. Now, I'm doing this, you know, quickly here, I have to verify this, but, you know, I mean, it's a math problem, it's a ratio, we know what the fees are, it's just a matter of where the number sits. You know, I, if we, if the board really wants to consider bringing, you know, back on the B sports, I absolutely, you know, encourage you to consider raising the fee to some degree, okay? I do not believe it's, you know, appropriate to add that all back in, that 162, all into the, it's going to, it's going to pinch us, it's going to pinch us in some areas, like student devices, like FTE, like, you know, range of things you refer to. So I would encourage some type of a fee offset here. Doesn't have to be all, doesn't have to be the total amount there, but some balance in between is what I would recommend. And I did this quickly, okay, and I wanted to verify this, got on my calculator here in a minute quickly, but that's where, you know, we could sit on some type of a splitting that cost, with the fee increases as far as cooperating with the district.
I'm just a little confused on these numbers. The one slide, cat, it was heading estimated fee increase, 2012, 2013 fees collected, $139,000, 1,100 paying athletes. What does that make up? Who are the 1,100 paying athletes? And is that cost neutral?
So that just comes from a straight, you know, the amount of the students that we had that actually paid the fee, as a, so it's not all participating athletes, because like we said, about 25% of our students are on fee waiver, screen reducing lunch, and so they don't pay the athletic fee.
So that's all students, whether you, I guess I'm confused.
That's all four schools combined, so the 140,000, approximately, that was the amount of money collected by all four schools. It's not evenly distributed, obviously, we have different numbers for each school, but that was the amount of money, revenue generated by the athletic fee in that school year for all interscholastic sports at the middle level.
Page the fees, is another question, only participants?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So that would be the students who participated, I apologize, who participated, so only the students who participate pay that fee.
Makes sense, and so that 139, that's pretty much offsets the costs associated with running those programs?
Not even close, no. No, it's just a small portion of it, it doesn't come close to, if you have the exact numbers, Bill, it costs, I remember, it costs around a half a million dollars, 600,000 to run the middle school athletic program, and we collect 140,000 in fees. That includes all the stipends, the programming and everything. No, it doesn't come close to offsetting, it's not a cash-in, cash-out program. There's district dollars allocated for that. That is just the high school one. What I, I just checked my math here by pulling that slide up, if we increase by $25, and we have 1,200 athletes playing middle school sports, that's $180,000 we would estimate collecting. So that verifies that 40,000, as I said before, so that flies across, check the comparison. So I mean, that's, it's a ratio, you know, of what it would be. So it does not even come close to offsetting the cost of the program. All we're doing is trying to figure out a way to offset some of these increasing costs if we do add things back in.
Have we investigated charges in these B sports?
No, I mean, there's many other information other than parent service. No, I mean, there's many other information other than parent surveying. I was, you know, until we got into this discussion, I wondered where we didn't charge an intermural fee. Most districts do. We could also incorporate an intermural fee. And usually, as Mr. Buck said, an intermural fee gets you paid once and then you, your health will participate in it, because kids kind of come and go. So they were suggesting here a $10 intermural fee. So if you have, again, let's say, 1,000 kids with a $10 fee, that would be some additional revenue that would help offset the programming here. I would recommend that fee increase as well.
When I heard the principal say is that you're going to have to decrease intermurals if you implement B-teams because of space considerations. Am I correct, or am I wrong?
It's a given.
Somebody said it frankly, and you would.
With boys volleyball and we added boys volleyball.
And so I guess what I'm asking is, I don't know how we can, as a board, justify to put a fee on intermural students if they're going to be scaled back.
It's just the space consideration.
I understand that, but if we're not going to be able to give them the space to play intermurals, and then on top of it, we're going to charge them a fee, whether it's $10 or $20, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
And that would be part of that, you know, the boys volleyball, you know, that spring time, spring. So that would be, so it would be a couple months.
Not all intermurals are in Pandora.
I understand that.
And some of the morning, I know our basketball, we got intermurals.
So would adding B-teams impact intermurals or not? Because I thought I heard you say that they would, and now I'm kind of hearing you say that from them.
Yeah, the girls' basketball season, too, is when we would run, because boys' basketball, with wrestling running concurrently, all of our gym space is used for the two hours after school and actually for the hour before school already. The girls' basketball, right now, allows us to run intermurals right after boys wrestling and boys' basketball are done. If we had multiple teams, then that would probably impact what we could do right after that point. Boys' volleyball would be another one that would impact that at that time.
And I have another question in regards to the survey itself, because I'm sitting here now listening to, you know, Jim rightfully say, you know, this is a mandate, and Joe Roman here saying, no, it's not a mandate. And I guess my question on the survey is, was any of this put into the context of what would you like to see happen at your middle school during the day and after school, or was it just all revolving around sports? Because if it was all revolving around sports, I could understand where you could, you know, get the input that you got. But if it were put into the context of, here are some other basic needs, and how do they impact your student, I could understand why you might get a different response or a different answer.
We included questions about what do your students participate in at the middle level, but we didn't, it wasn't, we didn't include any other questions about, you know, what you're interested in or other options.
Do you feel your job is a good computer school?
Right. We didn't do any of that, because, you know, the main focus was this specific issue.
One question that, you know, I was recently at a Wheaton City Council meeting, a consultant there, talking about the strategic plan for Wheaton Downtown, Wheaton specifically. And one of the comments they made, which I listened to closely, was that we, as a community, sell ourselves. And we, as the community, you know, consists of the park district, the school district, the city government, so on. I'd be curious of what our surrounding communities have as far as B-team sports. I mean, would that make a decision on whether I would move to Wheaton, Warrenville, et cetera, because of we have or don't have B-team sports? So what is the surrounding community doing?
And you have that on slides.
Well, maybe you can help me in that. Okay. So those, no B-teams are, Glen Allen doesn't have B-teams. Carol Stream does not have B-teams.
One school and one. It's like two.
The top part of it does, the bottom part does not. Is that correct? Principals?
Correct.
We just love the DuPage Metro in below, but obviously Glen Allen, Hadley, and Glen Allen, Grant, both students, neither of them have it. But Glen Allen, Hadley is not in DuPage, especially.
10 years ago, when this middle school conference was put together, I was a middle school principal in this conference. And I can tell you, the reason why the conference started was because all of those schools wanted the B participation, that was a big part of it. I was in that seat 10 years ago when this conference started. I'm very much a part of that, I remember it well. That's why those, all those schools in the current Two Rivers Conference got together, because we all committed to having comparable programs. And so that's why, we moved away prior to that, the District 200 schools played in this other group here, but we wanted to have B-level participation. So that's the way it exists right now. And school districts.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. Can I put you on the spot as a past principal?
Yes.
The question is, uh...
Yeah, this is a very challenging, and I reiterate everything I've said over this evening, all around the table as well as from the principals. You know, when I was a middle school principal, I was all about trying to provide programming for the kids. That's why we got involved in it in the first place, that's why District 200 did. At the time, I was in 303, that's exactly why we did that, okay? I believe we do need to try and figure out a way to bring these things back, okay? I've shared that with the principals. You know, we, I do believe it's some balance between increasing the fee and adjusting our budget. I think it's somewhere in between. I do believe the fee's too high to go all in, and I'm just putting it on the backs of all of the fee. And I believe splitting it would be some type of a reasonable solution. And I'm not saying 50/50, but, you know, figuring out a way to try and manage this and include these programs. There's clearly the benefits for the kids in these public curriculum environments. And when kids participate in schools, no matter what they participate in, you know, whether it's interscholastic sports, intermural sports, or clubs, they're going to be more successful in the classrooms, it definitely has a positive impact. It's cool. So, the issue at hand in my mind is the revenue part of it. I believe, you know, and I've shared this with the principals, that's why the fee part is part of this. And I believe, you know, we have to increase the fees if we're going to bring these back. Otherwise, it's going to cost us in other priorities that we have as a district, because there is, we are split here. So, you know, we, you know, $160,000 would buy a lot of handheld devices for kids in our classrooms across the district. So I would hate to spend all of that money on the district budget to reinstate these programs. So that's where I sit. And, you know, certainly I would be curious of what the rest of the board is on that. You know, that's where I'm at.
I'd like to propose an option four, which is a hybrid. When you look at B-team sports versus intermurals, in B-team, you get coaching, you get physicality, you get interscholastic competition. Intermurals, kids just go play, it's hard to play. So I'm wondering, what would be scenario four, is if we just create our own conference where we have a 12-game schedule. And I don't think our kids care whether they play for any kind of family, it's hard to play. So we have like a 12-game season for kind of a glorified intermurals, where students from Hubble are playing, students from Edison. The other, you know, so there's this in District 200 conference, which is reduced schedule, substantially reduce the transportation cost. That is our way to get kind of a coaching stipend for those students, that they still get the skills and ability, get the strategy, all this, this sort of camaraderie, play for their team. I think there's maybe a hybrid between B-team and intermurals, that provides the opportunities for kids, it could be a substantially reduced cost, and maybe we just keep it in turn for themselves, it could be a lot more simple. I don't know, I'm sure there's more details that I haven't thought about with the high school management, but I think it's worth exploring that additional scenario.
We could, and certainly I'll defer to the principals' thought on that. You know, we, having more middle schools, we could have created an interscholastic scenario. I would anticipate wanting to try and continue those affiliate tournaments and some different things that are involved in some of the other interscholastic, you know, sports, especially with our wrestling and our track and cross-country and the other sports here, which we really didn't get into. You know, your scenario would impact basketball and volleyball, you know, as it sits, because we would want to make sure we, you know, have equitable amongst those two, between wrestling and basketball, for instance. You know, we could limit the schedules, say, hey, we're only going to play a 12-game schedule instead of whatever it currently is, maybe it's 16 games, I'm not even sure what it is. How many contests do we play in basketball and volleyball? 14?
Plus the tournament.
Okay, plus the tournament. So we could try to pare that down a little bit, because there's costs. There's officials' costs, there's transportation costs. We could, we could do it two-time around inside the district, and then always limit, you know, the other districts, you know, minimize that. Now, that would be some cost. It's not going to be a game changer, but it would certainly, you know, minimize that as much. We could definitely work with staff on that and create, you know, maximize participation, try to strengthen the schedule a little bit, cut some of those costs.
I mean, I'm looking at the list here of estimated costs, I don't know if you need game workers to run the clock and track the book, you know, just to explain?
For intermurals, you know, we, they typically do not, and one of the kids usually doesn't. But interscholastics, you know, that is a contractual bargaining position with the teacher association, I'm saying it is what it is. And so therefore, that's where these numbers come from, we just don't make these numbers up. Those are stipends in the contract, you know, that are available for staff, for interscholastic activities.
Right, but that $100,000 cost could be substantially reduced, just to reduce schedule with that.
Not the $100,000 cost, because that's a stipend, and that's, that's a stipend in the contract. You coach boys' basketball at Edison, the stipend is what it is. That's right, it is what it is. That cost is hard cost, okay? Where we have the soft hustle a little bit is the number of contests. That's in those other numbers.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, the middle school principals, has there been an increase in the number of clubs that you have offered your students since the B-team sports were eliminated? And I seem to have heard that, maybe it was from Franklin, but I seem to have heard that since, you know, those cuts were made, that there were other opportunities, maybe that were less costly, that students were taking advantage of, and many more clubs have sprung up because of student interest and because of the lower stipend cost. Can you just kind of address that?
Yeah, originally, I think we were, as was mentioned in the presentation, we talked about having, you know, a supplement like a volleyball, intermural, that didn't really get a lot of legs, but we, yeah, we have increased the amount of clubs we have and the number of participation. I think when you came to our school for the board presentation, I had, we had the skate club come in on their skateboard, so we have about, you know, 20, 25 kids that participate in that. This year, we started a, and we all do some, a variety of different things, so we, based on student interest and whatnot. So we have about 50 kids, actually, that participate in the dance club after school. So we've definitely tried to increase student participation in a variety of things.
I just had one more from my seat, and just listening to our discussions tonight. I mean, it just seems to me that we are in a situation where we have a lot of things on our plate, and a lot of potential expenditures that we are uncertain as to how we're going to fund, you know, even the $88,000 that we talked about for virtual learning. So if I look at increasing by 162,000 for a sport, you know, versus 88,000 for virtual learning spread over, we have quite a lengthy discussion about that, $88,000 spread over a year and a half. I just have to say that I'm, I'm just concerned that we take things, again, in isolation and say, we ought to be doing this, when there are a lot of things that we ought to be doing. And I think it's our job, it's incumbent upon us, to prioritize these definite needs and wishes of the community and the demands of an educational system that needs to procure students for jobs that we don't even know about yet. So I'm a little bit reluctant to say, you know, we should invest any more of the district money in B-team sports, because I think we look at B-team sports in the context of all the other things we have coming downwind, expenditures that we know we're going to want to make this year, that we may, again, debate about at this table and say, where are we going to get this money? And it just seems to me that, you know, we just need to be very, very cautious before we say, well, you know, we know this is a good thing, yes, there are a lot of good things for kids, giving kids, you know, access to Mandarin at the high school level, or on down the road, access to French and Spanish and German in first grade. Those are things that we need to be considering and cognizant of, and we need to be balancing one against the other. So I don't know that we can make a decision. I think we would all love to give all of our children everything. I mean, I'd love to bring back all kinds of different things that my son didn't have and a lot of his friends that followed him didn't have. But on the other hand, I think we just have to put everything into priority, and we have to give it a context of, we can do anything in isolation, and I think that was the message that we got from the leadership of our middle school principals.
Well, we can do it the next board meeting, at the committee home meeting, we're going to be having an update on our financial projections, okay? We can certainly, as big picture, you know, and we're not going to be talking about specifics, but it will lay out where we sit financially, and, you know, there are two items here that we have to report on this evening, and where that fits. Now, there is a little more urgency on that first item, you know, on the virtual learning, we already talked about that. There is some urgency here, but that's not critical at this point. It will be soon, if we're going to implement things for next year, so we have schedules appropriate for, you know, the, if we do have B-team sports. But we certainly can continue that discussion, the next board meeting, committee hold, it will be on the big picture, on a macro level. Mr. Farley's going to provide an update along with PMA about where we sit, you know, for our budgeting purposes. But at least it'll give us perspective on, you know, what latitude we have, discretion we have. If, you know, so if the board wants to table it at this time and then bring it back into consideration at the committee board meeting.
I certainly would like to have more discussion about B-team sports, about the, in the context of press, wins, and cheap, with student participation, as we discussed, including some considerations of intermural fees, parts of what the impact of B-team sports might, so that we can better expand on the financial context of this project.
And in addition to that, I would like to see, I'd like to kind of have a clarify the impact of each of those scenarios in terms of, you know, if we bring back, you know, B-team, here's what it means in terms of what we will not be able to support in terms of other clubs or, you know, to, we could just have that as a guideline, because we don't want to get on down the road and say, well, there's going to be no impact, and now we find out that there is.
And it's going to be hard to quantify. It's pure speculation, and I think, you know, the principal said that, it's going to be hard to quantify intermurals, because kids vote with the fee. So it's going to be difficult to quantify, is all I'm saying, unless somebody feels differently.
No, I'm saying, we have done our facilities.
We can tell you a due space would not be available, is available now. Do we need a second on the table?
No.
Next item on the agenda is financial update. Discussion item, presentation of discussion regarding debt extension, borrowing, and the refinancing of existing bonds.
Tonight, as a result of discussion with the finance committee, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Farley at this time, and I know Mr. Matheson was involved in some of the under... And I know Mr. Matheson was involved in some of the discussions about this to finance committee. Mrs. Swanson was as well, and is not here this evening. We have brought forward for the board to take a look at this evening in consideration of how to pay for some of our summer projects. And part of that would be in a restructuring of our current debt, as well as possibly issuing some additional bonds. We're going to run through those scenarios here this evening. I'll return over to Mr. Farley and let him provide the other additional context. And then turn it over to Bob Lewis from PMA, who will walk through the funding options that we may have with our existing debt and how we might be able to do some of our summer projects with this term.
Hey, Dr. Harris, as you mentioned, this discussion started really at the facilities committee meeting. But it also started almost a year ago as we looked at our net schedule, current net schedule as we were moving through the Jefferson project. We were just brought up front of it. You know, the identifiable slope that was on that schedule. And I think the context at the time was regardless of what happened with Jefferson, we were going to address that slope that was on the schedule of our debt. And when the time was right, we would be making modifications to ease that burden, as it were. Obviously, taking advantage of, you know, the interest rates, which are much different now, or much better now. It's going to be very low, so taking advantage of that. So this discussion night really is a two-part. And I think the first part is that our current net schedule has a sense right now of what we're going to do to fix it, for lack of a better term. And also, out of the facilities committee who came through, and Mr. Gianniani did a great job at the meeting we had in South talking about all the projects, and I think he ended it with, we got to figure out how we pay for this. So this is one of those, you know, one of the options that we're looking at. That's Bob Lewis from PMA, our financial advisors, who will use for these types of projects and concepts that come forward. He's going to talk to you, this is a two-part discussion, restructuring piece to it, as well as the bond piece to it. But I'm still going to this under, well, Bob to speak to you and talk about before.
Good evening. So as Dr. Harris and Mr. Farley stated, we're going to really talk about two different topics tonight. They are interrelated. We begin with just a current debt overview. What your debt service currently looks like. So what you see here is the debt service on your general obligation bonds. Debt service means your principal and your interest payments do annually. The first five years or so of that picture were impacted when we did the payoff of bonds. When you sold, or the Hubble, used a property for the old Hubble School, and we used that to pay off $5 million bonds. We did that in the early years of the structure, which owed the tax for those years. And then after that initial, so you have some gradual increases for the next five years, but then it rapidly ramps up after that. So part of tonight's presentation is going to look at how you can address that over time and how best effectively to do that. And then we'll also look at, again, the possible new money option. There's some legal concepts tonight, we need to make sure you have an understanding of as we go through this. Something called the debt service extension base, which is an important consideration when you look at issuance of non-referendum general obligation bonds. I'm there losing third time's charm. So, the school code allows school districts to issue non-referendum bonds. But because you are in a tax cap county, there's a limitation on how much of those bonds you can issue. A limitation is called the debt service extension base, which was created back in the early 90s when tax caps first came in. Your debt service extension base was initially set at whatever you levy for in 1994 for your non-referendum bonds. So at the time, they had some life safety bonds, working cash bonds. It's some combination of non-referendum bonds. And that amount that year was about $3.2 million. So that's an annual limit. So it's not like a principal limit, you know. It's not saying you can only do $3.2 million borrowing. It's saying your annual payment cannot exceed $3.2 million. Back in 2009, General Assembly changed the law surrounding the debt service extension base, actually tied it to CPI. So your extension base has been increasing by the same CPI percentage that impacts your limiting rate when you look at your operating levy annually. So now your DSEP or levy year 2013 stands at $3.5 million. Your CPI comes out in January, we'll know the, your debt service extension base will go up then as well. Slide six shows you your current non-referendum general obligation bonds. So shown on this slide are only those bond issues, it does not contain your referendum bonds. So you currently have five, or excuse me, four different outstanding series of non-referendum bonds. The total of those annual payments, you'll see just to the left of the first peach column, peach colored column. It's right, so your annual payment's right around that $3.2 million per year. Your debt source extension base is at that $3.5 million number for levy year 13. I'm looking at the row just below the yellow row. The yellow row represents levy year 12, which you're finishing, you're already entered into levy year 13. And then you take, so you take the difference between your debt service extension base and your actual non-referendum payment, you get what we use called the remaining margin. So that's additional legal capacity you have to make payments on non-referendum bonds, which is a key element here because that allows you to sell bonds if you so choose to and have the ability to pay the interest payments on those bonds. Because as you see, for the next six years, your payment remains about $3.2 million. And then you've paid off all your non-referendum bonds, which gives you ample room for the principal payments should you choose to borrow. So this slide contemplates the issuance of a $10 million bond issue, which I understand is approximately the amount that the facilities committee has looked at needing for the projects, some of the projects that they've identified and examined. You would be able to fit that bond issue into your debt service extension base. If you look at the first peach column there, that would be the amortization of that issue. So for the first five years or so, or six years, you would be able to fit in the interest payments. So it's pretty much interest-only payments. Your remaining margin would be less than about $25,000 per year. So you'd have the ability under your debt service extension base to make the interest payments on these. Then after that, you start paying back the principal. Illustrated here, paying the principal back over five installments. So that the length of the bond issue would be approximately 10 years. You want to extend beyond the current life of your bonds. And the remaining margin, you do have the option to say, well, let's sell it as short as possible so that the remaining margin still going to $1.3 million. And we could sell it and maybe only have $500,000 remaining margin. So there's some flexibility there if you wanted to do a little bit shorter of an issue. But it's always good to leave some margin so you don't get down the road and have everything filled up right up to the top so you don't have as much flexibility. I added to this spreadsheet, there's a new column to the right of the remaining margin called the total referendum bonds debt service. So I've added in your referendum bonds, so you can see how this would all fit together. And you get to the total general obligation bonds debt service. Well, one item to note about your debt structure is oftentimes when we structure bonds, we try to make it such that when you sell your non-referendum bonds, it doesn't cause a further increase in your payment. And the way your bonds were structured, if you sell non-referendum bonds, it's actually going to cause the payment to go up even more. So as opposed to fitting a new payment in and then keeping it the same. Similar to like if you had a $500,000 car payment in your budget and you paid off the car, you bought a new car, you just continued the payment on without adding something new into your budget. And we'll have some graphical representations in the next section about how the debt will look, including the $10 million, along with the potential future restructuring. Here's a potential timeline should you choose to sell the $10 million. You're reviewing the financing option tonight. You would publish notice of a binding hearing, BINA stands for Bond Issue Notification Act hearing in the paper on January 15. Again, this is just a suggested potential timeline. The board would adopt a notice of intent resolutions published in the local paper, allowing the public to be aware of your intent to sell bonds. You'd hold a binding hearing on the night of 22nd to allow the public the opportunity to comment about the proposed bond issue. The notice of intent is published in the paper in approximately January 23rd. That starts a 30-day petition period in which 10% of the registered voters signed a petition. That would cause the bond issue to go to referendum. You would have, if that petition period passes, you could have the bond sale February 26th. You would authorize then to sell the bonds that night. And we'd have to file the, there is a deadline here, and we've had a lot of deadlines discussed in your presentation, but there's a deadline here as well. To, in order to access this next year's debt service extension base, you could make that interest payment. You'd have to file by February 28th your bond resolution with the county. That's the deadline is that date in order to establish a new bond levy. And then the bonds would be closed and delivered around March 26th. So your bond holders would get, new bond holders would receive their bonds, and then you would get, receive your proceeds. So that's the first half of the presentation on the possible new money option. If you want to stop and take questions as it's time, go through the whole presentation.
Let's go through the whole thing. Okay. We would come back to review, because it really is a combination of things to understand why this is possible.
So the restructuring options, again, going, recalling what the slope of your debt service looked like. You have on this slide, slide 10, it's just a summary of your outstanding principle. I'm not distinguished whether it's non-referendum or referendum principle on this slide. So this doesn't include interest being, it's just a principle. The issues that are peach are the ones that would be the candidates for restructuring the debt to accomplish the goal that you may choose to do for achieving whatever structure you deem to be appropriate in the long run. The characteristics of these bond issues affect the timing of when you would do the restructuring. So for instance, let's start with the first one, the 2005 bonds are not callable to 11-1 of 2015. When you do a, when you refinance your home, you get a new home mortgage and immediately replaces the old home mortgage. There's no real time period between those events. If you sell bonds today to, for instance, refund the 2005 bonds, the 05 bonds are not paid off until 11-1 of 15, you're like two years from now. So meanwhile, those funds have to sit in the escrow. If you know how short-term rates are right now, you're not going to earn much on it. And the other characteristic of those bonds is those bonds are themselves in advance for funding, which means under the IRS rules, any bonds that you sell more than 90 days of call date have to be sold as taxable. So you immediately raise the cost of borrowing by 100 to 125 basis points. Then you have the 2006 bonds, which are, would be necessary for the restructuring. That call date's 10-1 of '16, so it's another year out. Escrow's even longer, it's also in advance for funding. Therefore, subject to the same restrictions, since the prior issue, the bonds would be sold taxable. The 08A bonds are not callable to 10-1 of '18. And that's a combination of new money, advance for funding, so some of those bonds will be restricted. And then your last series, which would be an eligible candidate to achieve the ultimate objective, are the 09D bonds, which are not callable to 10-1 of '19. And an element of those is also in advance for funding. So for those reasons, as I go through the rest of the presentation, you have to keep in mind those call dates, which makes the refunding inefficient. And the characteristic of the bond that if you did something today, much of the refunding would have to be done as taxable. So you're immediately adding interest costs to what you would do. So I've already covered some of these, these are vital timing considerations for the restructuring. So the call dates are several years out. Many of the bonds are not eligible for taxable refunding. Right now, and I think I've discussed this before, when local issuers in Illinois sell bonds, they're paying what's called the Illinois premium, especially the longer your bond issues are. A lot of investors have not only backed away from buying the state of Illinois bonds, they've backed away from buying issuers located within the state of Illinois. Now, that premium has come down a bit as a result of the action that the General Assembly took last fall with the pension reform. Whether they agreed with the reform or not, that was a popular thing to occur in the bond market because it showed that the state for the first time had taken their pension issue seriously. So that's helped somewhat that all my premium. So over time, if the state continues to get credibility, maybe its rating starts to go up, and you know, it all depends on what happens with the court case, that premium could come down, which means that would be to your benefit of waiting as well. Fourthly, your credit ratings are AA3 by Moody's, AA- by Stata and Empours, which are good ratings, are in the AA category, but not as high as you've been in the past. And the prospects are that over time, that those rates could go up because you instituted some serious policies and procedures, your fund balances have gone up, which will help after one or two audits that show, okay, they build up their fund balances or being consistent with their practices and policies, that could grace your ratings. That would bring down your cost of funding when you sell bonds. So those are all the, sort of the reasons to wait to do this in a more protracted plan. The one reason to do something now would be waiting entails market risk and tax law risks. The factors known above, we know will increase the cost of financing. You don't necessarily know what the market's going to do. Will it go up? I would say yes, probably going to go up over the next two, three, or four years. But I don't think it's going to go up so much that it would outweigh the costs or the benefits of waiting, which I've already gone over. And then later in the presentation, I have a slide that actually shows you when you would start doing these steps. So what you see here is a chart that looks at a possible hypothetical refunding of those four series of bonds, but not today, but over time in several series. So you're kind of buying into a plan that will be implemented, not all at once, but as it becomes efficient to do those bond series and restructuring. The blue bars represent your existing debt service. The red would be the restructured debt service. But we've also included in here the $10 million of new possible new money. So you'll see in the first five or six years, the red bar slightly higher. That's for that $300,000 so interest payment. And then we, you know, what number do you choose? My objective is to level off your debt service at some point. What number you want to level it off, that is up to debate. You want to level it off at 18 million, 20 million, 22 million. What I've done here is about $21 million. And obviously, the higher you let that number get, the less costly the restructuring would be. But the, so the structure I put in place here, you notice you peak out at 21, you're there for a couple of years in roll, and it starts to come down a little bit. And then again, that refers back to what I was talking about with your non-referendum bonds. I would like to put a structure in place that ultimately give you the flexibility, should you choose to sell non-referendum bonds, you would do that without a further increase in the annual payment. And so you'd have like a straight line going across at $21 million. And that's what I think most of us that are individuals are familiar with. If we have a debt obligation, your mortgage or your car payment, it doesn't go up over time. It stays relatively constant. So as your income rises, well, then that portion of that debt payment in your budget goes down. Same thing for your taxpayers. If you can level off that debt service payment as new property comes into the district, then everybody shares more in debt payments. So each individual share of debt will go down over time if you level off the payments. So that's the objective that we set forth here. I don't want to have trouble with this, but... So what's the benefit of the restructuring? The debt service levels off about $21 million a year in levy year 2017, instead of peaking at $29.4 million in levy year 2022. We've included in the structure $10 million of new money. And the structure allows for the use of non-referendum bonds without substantial increases in debt service in future years. So assuming current interest rates. So as you start doing the restructuring, if you choose to do a plan or a plan similar to this, assuming interest rates stay the same, which I grant is not a likely scenario, but assuming that they're at today's rates, the debt service would be, in this plan of finance, would be approximately $4.9 million lower after the restructuring, netting out the $10 million of new money. The $10 million of new money... The $10 million of new money would raise the number from where it's at currently, but if you just did the restructuring and didn't sell $10 million of the money, your payments would actually be $4.9 million lower, even though you're stretching out a bit, because if you go... Remember that principle page I showed you earlier, those interest rates at the bottom of the column are in that 4.5% to 5% range. So you're lowering the interest rate, so even though you're extending your term by two to three years, you'd actually end up lowering your overall debt service cost. But due to the characteristics of the bonds to be refunded, we've talked about them being mostly advanced refunding, call dates further out, if the restructuring were done today, so many of those bonds would be sold as taxable, the debt service would increase by about $15.2 million to accomplish the same goal. You'd have to go out a few more years, and the payment would be a little bit higher. And that gets due to the inefficiency of the escrow, and in fact, that many of the bonds would be sold taxable. I know it'd be very nice if we could change the picture this year, so you can go and say, "Look, we've leveled off the debt service." But it'd be much more costly to do that versus waiting and just talk about, "This is our plan. We're going to implement the plan when it's most efficient to do so." So when would be the timing on the various restructurings? Series 2015 refunding would be about approximately $6 million to refund the callable 2005 bonds, but the issue, the reason why you'd wait to do this, right there. A Series 2016 refunding would be about $35 million to refund the 2006 bonds. And 2018 refunding would be approximately $24 million and refund the '08 bonds. 2019 refunding would be approximately $42 million and refund the '09 D bonds. Now, of course, nothing is set in stone. I mean, if you vote and decide, you know, we like this restructuring plan, it's something we want to do, each board, whichever board is there at that time, and those bond issues would have to vote separately on the bond resolution. So even though you may conceptually like the plan and want to proceed with it, ultimately, each one of those bond series is going to be approved by a bond resolution by whatever board is seated at that time. So that's the sum of my presentation. I have some stuff in the appendix, which if anybody has a question, some of the appendix, I'd be happy to address, otherwise, I'll go ahead and take your questions now.
I have a couple of questions. On Page 13, I just want to make it... Make sure I understand that. Or go back, page 12, in a second.
12?
Yeah, Page 12, or Slide 12. Okay, the blue bar is our current debt service that's in place.
Yes.
Okay. So if, for instance, in 2012 levy payable to 2014, it's a little about $17 million payments.
Yes.
Okay. And then going out to 222, it gets up almost to that $30 million number of dollars.
Correct.
All right. The restructuring, then, the red lines, assumes that we have raised $10 million, and it assumes interest rates as of today.
For the restructuring, correct.
For the restructuring. So if interest rates rise in the future, as these Page 14 items get refinanced, that would change that picture. So that's... That doesn't get cast in stone, that red line.
No, it's not cast in stone.
Okay. All right. I guess if we... If we were to take the total of the blue bars over that period of time, debt service total, which I think is 204 million, and we took the total of the red bars, okay, which would be including the $10 million, what would be our total debt payment over that over this over a period of time?
Well, the new money is...
$10 million.
$13 million, including interest.
Okay, so there'd be three more million of interest this way.
Correct.
Okay.
So the... Well, the... Well, I can look at the... It would be... If you go back to Slide 7, the total amount of bonds, our general obligation bonds, is 252 million.
That includes interest, correct.
Principal and interest. Although you shouldn't... You shouldn't add up the 16 million, because most of those payments are already made, because that was in the current...
But again, comparable.
Right. And then the...
That's our current debt service?
I'm sorry, that includes 13 million. So if you take that out, you're at 239 million right now.
239 is the total of what we have now as future debt service payments, principal and interest, current debt, starting next July going forward.
Correct.
Blue line, right? Yeah, that's the blue line total, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what would be the total of the red lines, if we could refinance at today's rates?
The red lines would be at 247 million, because... Because that's Slide 7, that's the 252 million includes the $10 million of new money.
All right, so the red line is 247 and 247.
Right.
But it includes 10 million.
Correct.
So in reality, the net cost of the 10 million, if you want to call it that, is about eight... Is that a fair statement?
Uh... No, because you could... I mean, because you could achieve the savings without doing the $10 million.
I recognize, but you know, let's make the assumption we need $10 million for that.
Right.
So if we did this plan, okay, and raised the $10 million, and we'll come back to the why of that in a second.
But...
We're currently at 240. To raise $10 million today's money, to do whatever we have to do with it, it would cost us 247 in the future to pay those dollars back, which includes the interest and the principal and the restructuring and the interest rate. So it's about an $8 million multi-year cost.
Yes.
Okay. Can we talk about why we need the $10 million?
Well...
I'm sure you're trying to... Okay.
I can tell you why we need the $10 million. We have some, you know, critical and urgent facility needs, and involves, you know, HVAC, it touches 18 of our 20 buildings, though, is that correct? You know, we're going to be providing a facility update in two weeks, and you know, and you know, the Facility Committee's seen it, we're going to finalize that in our meeting, our committee coming up, but you've seen it. Remember Jim, your last comment, we're not sure how we're going to pay for all this, but we've got some critical needs there. About six and a half made was in HVAC and energy-related stuff, and about $3 million in other projects, roofs and laptop projects, like Murple South, Johnson, Emerson Roof, Wheat North Roof, those types of things.
So can I summarize this? As we're saying, we have immediate need, basically, of $10 million. And we have no... Do we have any other place to get that money at present? We take it out of fund balance, out of DT support?
Okay. Sure, we can take it out of fund balance, but that would create other issues, which is more as well aware.
All right. So final line is we need, you know, if we need $10 million with significant improvements, this is one of the ways, or maybe the only way, potentially, I don't know, one of the significant ways that we could do this. And our total over cost over the life of these bonds would be, again, assuming interest rates today where we're at, and which, again, is somewhat tricked up by that, you know, we can't refinance everything today, we have to wait a few years on a number.
Right.
Of these bonds, which is not good, because interest rates are probably rising. We may get some Illinois discount in the future, I don't know, but you know, the point is that it's about an out-of-pocket, under those basic assumptions, about $8 million to fix these $10 million projects we have today.
Under those assumptions, correct.
And we're also levelizing out our debt service payment, as indicated on Page 12. And what this is saying is that same community that would pay roughly 18, 17, 18 million this next year, in five or, let's say, six years, it would be almost 23, 24 million.
Correct.
Or about... And that's just right on top of out of the textbook. That's back to life.
That's our current debt structure, and that's... We recognize that. The board looked at this a year or two ago, and we knew we were going to have something in our debt structure. Well, in this scenario, it's two things here. We can capture some new dollars, we can fix some immediate critical needs, safety and security, you know, needs in our buildings, as well as restructure our debt over a four to five-year period.
I have some other comments from our Finance Committee, if I want to bring those up now, or, you know, in the same... It's all related, especially. So should I do that now? Okay. You know, one of the other things that was a concern in the Finance Committee was that we do not have in our budget any recurrence of what I'll call growth replacements, significant, you know, we'll call it, you know, the condominiumizing, the cost of running buildings. You know, so one of the concerns we have is every time we have these large accumulating major projects, we don't have any way of funding. One of the suggestions that came up in that committee meeting was that we consider... We have a fund balance policy of about 25% of numbers now. And if we looked at that, where we stood at the end of last year, we would have about 5.5 billion over that fundamental fund balance need in the operating funds. One of the suggestions that came out of the Finance Committee was that we consider moving that into a, we'll call it Capital Projects Fund or something, to begin a amortization of funding, a reserve funding, think of it in terms of a condominium, roof repair, wall repair, and so on, so that we have a core amount of dollars. And then as we move on, as we look at, you know, other alternatives, you know, as we move on in the future, we have to start looking at funding those on an annualized basis. And we may take that out of, you know, we talked about the tax levy, for instance, and the, you know, the concept of raising our tax rate to the, you know, the highest rate we could, while using some of that money to, you know, to help continue to fund that Capital Projects Fund, you know, that Capital Projects Fund, so that we have the ability to start raising some money there, so we don't have to go to the well, or to the referendum, or refinancing every time we have these major projects started. Part of the discussion in that is that there were bills going to look at the, kind of our upcoming needs, to see if that 4.4 million, along with some of the 1.75 million, could be available to help fund those projects as they become available, and that was another process. So, you know, to me, these are so related, okay? I mean, I'm having trouble saying we're going to pass this without looking at how do we deal with this problem in the future. And that problem in the future is we need to set aside, or continually, I'll call it, you know, set aside that depreciating amount every year, or the reserve funding for condominium concept of funding future building projects. So, you know, I mean, this, I don't know how else we can approach this, what is, I'll call it, $10 million facilities committee problem without doing something like this. You know, there is the potential, I believe, in getting some additional dollars out of this funding, okay, which I don't know if you do it per se. I mean, you know, let's say the project book sums up and says it's 20 million, and we have 5 million excess fund balance, and this, you know, maybe that would be a way to resolve as well. But, you know, I think we have to look at trying to, again, solve this problem on an ongoing basis. And that was kind of what came out of the Finance Committee that I, you know, I'm reporting, that, you know, I may have sent it over to the meetings app, not more, but, you know, it was still a minimum number of, I'm just saying. So anyway, that's kind of the, what I would call the blended approach to the whole thing.
What Jim's, you know, referencing there is two different things. Along with, you know, this bond flattening and restructuring plan, you know, we had talked about having a plan. You know, what he's saying is, well, let's also think about our long-term funding of capital projects. Now, one big assumption there that the board, you know, needs to consider is that we would target 25% as our fund balance, and then right now, we're over that. I mean, that's what he's referring to there. Use those dollars as that capital projects fund. Yeah, yeah, see, whatever you want, however you want to reference. Now, that would be, you know, certainly Board would have to weigh in on that. You know, we set our board policy 25% to 40%, that's where we land on that. So, you know, what he's suggesting is we target that minimum, you know, expectation, use those additional dollars for capital, for capital projects.
And if we did something like that, what do we anticipate the rating agencies doing? What's expected, that decision? Because one of the reasons we adopted the policy of having a 25% was to raise our financial ratings for as high as we need in order to, perhaps, to get a rating from unions and some of the non-rating agencies, if we...
What's your thoughts on that?
As far as fund balance?
Sure.
What impact does that have?
Yes, very good question. And the ratings, when you spin fund balance, you're doing deficit spinning. The ratings differentiate in their analysis what your deficit's spinning on. If your deficit's spinning on operating expenditures, you're creating essentially a structural problem. That's a bad thing. The use of fund balance to pay for capital, as long as it's consistent with your policies, that's not frowned upon. So as long as you stay within your set fund balance, so if you get up to 31, 32%, you have some sort of procedure, or anything above our threshold we put over to our Capital Projects Fund, then they're fine with that.
I have some questions in that. That was kind of one of them, because isn't that number, the percentage, is a function of your budget for that year, correct? So I would be a little hesitant to go down to 25, knowing that our budget would probably increase next year, and then we'd be below the 25 threshold, and if we were to take some money out of there now. But I agree with Jim. I think we talked about this many years ago, developing some sort of a sinking fund, I think is what it was called at that time, where we would just continually kind of put money away for major maintenance-type expenditures. I don't know, Rosemary's that hearing where she was, she was in there, you know, it was many years ago, when the first couple of referendums were on.
We do have a sub-fund of the O&M Fund called the... That serves that purpose, as a capital renewal fund, I think is what we call it, in the discussion in the Finance Committee, which we'll talk about this, Jim, I've discussed it, and it's detailed, is the Capital Renewal Fund, or Capital Projects Fund was changed a few years ago to allow school districts to do that type of spending in a separate fund for, used to be the site of construction funds, now called Capital Projects Fund. And that's how school districts do that without deficit spending in their budget, by transferring that money. And reminding the board too, we've done this the last two years, where we moved fund balance from the Capital Projects, strictly from the O&M Fund, to the Capital Projects Fund for projects. Three or four of them the previous year, Wheat North Roof, Power, or a number of them that, that two years ago, and last year, we did the ones in the fields. We also spent some of that money, the education fund, to pay down the lease for the technology money as well. And your point too, this entire, you are correct, the 25% is a moving target, as the revenues of the district changes, that 25% goes up as well. So it is a... It would be a bit of a balancing act to go to 25% this year, if you have to look at your revenues and do that. I'd be more probably into moving that money how we've done it. And we, in our five-year plan as well, you know, Dr. Harris has put in some movement of money each year to Capital Projects Fund, four projects of that nature, so, but we do have to define 25% as a role, you know.
I think that, you know, the concept I'm dealing with, the 5 million for is not the exact number, the 25% doesn't have to be the exact number, but the concept of moving a significant amount, and where's that money come from? It really came from the $15 million grant, or $14 million grant we got, we collected on 10 years after the FAP, a year or two ago. We've used some of that money to pay down different things, and we also used it now to get up to our 25% funding. So, you know, this is the excess, and I think, again, seeing that was kind of a building-related issue. I think the key here is I want to somehow designate, whether it's Capital Projects, whether we designate fund balance, whether we move it into this alternative fund, the O&M Fund, basically somehow identify that, so that we know that separate, set aside to do it. That's really the key to the conversation. If we leave it in general fund balance, or working cash, or some number like that, you know, we lose track potentially of what we're trying to accomplish. And that's the policy, I think, that we need to look to do in the future, because we can't go to this well every time we have $10 million a year. So, you know, one other aspect we talked about in this, either this item, or what I've just talked about, has any, has any concept of discussion regarding any rebuilding, or renovation, or whatever, Jefferson? That's not in here, that's not in this plan that we just talked about, that would be a separate and distinct topic. You know, that might require a separate building referendum, or whatever, if that were to be decided by this board, but this has nothing to do with that. This is merely trying to find a way to fund the ongoing significant improvements that are needed, or depreciation, or deterioration of various buildings that we have already built.
But if I understand it correctly, you have a critical need for $10 million if you do full restoration. And this, the financing proposal does address that. In the meantime, people should adopt this refinancing proposal, and I'm saying that In the meantime, people should adopt this refinancing proposal, we're not saying we are, and then work towards building up or buying for future building, building in this business at the same time. Where would you find all this money, is that the wish?
You know, my reaction to that is that I, for me to support this process that we're talking about here, raises $10 million, I think we need to address that leftover, I'll call it, from the 14 million a couple of years ago and set in place a plan. You know, without those, I cannot just look at this as an isolated instance, as we talked about tonight on other topics, that, you know, I think we, you know, this provides a way to solve immediately, but we have to prevent that circumstance in the future and if we have that opportunity at this point.
You know, and we have identified, you know, these are, these $10 million things, these are critical issues. And we have other things that are in that next level, that's what Jim's talking about. He's talking about how do we start picking those off year after year after year, correct?
Yeah, some of those, you know, the roof may be 18 years out of 20 years on some building. So, we have to set aside now, continue to fund it so at the end of the two or three years out, we have enough in the pocket with it.
So, now that we have this comprehensive facilities plan, we should be able to do that fairly effectively, but I think it's going to be a combination, right, of borrowing and, because it's just like if you want to do an improvement to your home, sometimes you save up the cash to do it, but typically you're going out for a home equity loan. So, I mean, is that kind of what you're, what this is, this refinancing is kind of like a home equity loan to repay, redo the roof and all of that stuff? And, and yet, some people might use a combination of their savings and the loan to do this kind of thing. Is that, am I kind of characterizing it correctly?
I think the $10 million that we're talking about raising in this pace board, the $10 million on the table. My point is, you've got somewhere, if we take $5 million of this hole leftover from the grant, excess fund balance, whatever you might call it, over our 25% base. And we can set that aside in some way, designate it somehow. Look at what I think we don't have, the 10-year plan or five-year plan of building deterioration or building maintenance requirements yet, and that's being developed. So, or do we have it?
We've got that. We've got those prioritized and what is, you know, how we then organize that over a two or three year period, you know, we'd have to determine what those projects are each year.
So, the 5 million is the available kind of core that's going to address those problems with the future budget of, you know, without tax increase per se, without, you know, again, we may have that, you know, our 1.7% increase, some of that, so we have to go there now or whatever.
One of the things Bob mentioned, you know, early on there, is we're not maxing out our debt service extension either. So, if we get some critical needs five years down the road, not only would we have seed money to start with, we also then could, you know, we could, we're leaving room there. We're not going to max it out for, you know, immediately for our...
No, yeah, you're leading substantial capacity that would be available five years down the road if you needed more of it. So, you can almost prioritize your capital needs, those that we can finance with their operating dollars, those that we need to go to the extension base with, and those that you go to a referendum for.
I think in the big picture again, what we're trying to, what I'm suggesting from the finance committee is we're trying to seed some existing dollars to deal with future long-term project needs and, you know, we want to designate while we got it and, you know, work at toward funding in the future. And, you know, without that plan, I think we're not achieving what we're trying to accomplish.
In that regard, we have finance committee, I don't know if this will burden on any committee, but finance committee, facilities committee, they've come up with a draft of policies over the season. What this looks like in black and white as far as how much at the South Side or part of the board, on the building side as opposed to the working cash fund at this point, I'm not sure that they don't endanger our federating by using a kind of like a sample of working cash fund in that project. I think when we have some sort of language or policy or something written, then I can see how we can get forward.
In response to that, I think the work, the fund balance in the operations maintenance fund, which the bills are describing that it being a component of it, again, I'm a component of setting it aside, identifying whether it's a capital projects fund, if it's a segment of operations maintenance, it doesn't matter, but if we do that in the operations maintenance fund, that fund balance is part of our fundamental calculation. That's part of the reserve, you know, that we look at, you know, where capital projects may not, because that's not an operating fund. So, it wouldn't damage that if that is a concern, but I don't believe that's a concern in any way. Still like to see some of the terms I mentioned.
With designating as you would like, would it put us in a predicament should we have, you know, a rainy day? Because really, I view those reserves as our rainy day fund. I just, I think, so if we take, if we take money and we take it out of that rainy day fund and put it in this set aside category that you're suggesting, then is that not available to be transferred back should we have a rainy day?
My, I guess rainy day to me is a building problem. Okay, rainy, I mean, what's a rainy day? If, you know, everything else is operational, it's, you know, salaries and wages, it's, you know, tax books, so on.
Well, rainy day to me could be that the state doesn't fund us for, you know, $25 billion that we have set aside. If the state gets behind and we can't make payroll, to me, that's a rainy day. So, that, that's what I'm talking about. And if we have some sort of a, I mean, there were things that a lot of people in this community were predicting and doom and gloom with the state, we shouldn't do this, we shouldn't do that because the state is so uncertain. If we start taking money out of that reserve and designating it specifically for buildings, then should we have a rainy day? Are we confined by law or whatever from using that money in a different way?
I think we have a 25% reserve already in place for that reason. That's 25% rainy day. You know, so, you know, but again, if that, you know, there's nothing that can't be reversed. I mean, the only thing that could be not reversible is if we use that 5 million or whatever set aside and we use it to repair buildings, sounds wrong, okay? But, you know, if we don't do it, we've still got to find some other things. So, you know, the whole concept of having the reserve of 25% is the rainy day. So, and I guess that's how I would describe it. I think the last part of this is timing is of the essence. Because if we don't do this by whatever the deadline date is...
February 28th.
We, what does that mean, I guess?
Well, it just means you wouldn't be able to access the levy for levy year 2013. So, the first, so you wouldn't be able, so the first two interest payments, you wouldn't be able to levy for them, you would have to pay for them out of district operating dollars instead. So, let's say you waited to the May, you covered, you had to pay that from something else.
And in addition, you wouldn't have the $10 million to deal with either.
Well, you can get it, it's just that that first levy year would be, you'd have to pay for something, because bond loans like to be paid approximately every six months.
We'd have the budget for that, so, out of operating expenses, which, that's why this timeline is critical. You know, once we looked at this, you know, we realized, you know, that's why, you know, this timeline could happen, can't happen. If we do have, if the board, you know, would like to see us reform of this, we do have to adopt that resolution at two weeks from now to reform this.
I think, you know, to respond to your question about the fund balance policy, you know, if we can write it in that time, fine, or reserve, whatever you might call it, fine. If we can't, but we agree to the concept, I, you know, I could be supportive of this component. But I think that's absolutely critical that we do those two, because I cannot separate the two questions.
I propose that we go ahead and publish the notes of the planning, or we're not obligated to ask for those, because that's, that's right outside of publishing that list. What else is thought?
We certainly, if we do do that, then we will prepare an action item for the 22nd, you know, for the board to consider. Now, you know, if you do pass it that evening, then we can move forward with, you know, the process, then I understand the fact that we should, that we have this. If you don't pass it, then, you know, we're, you know, if we still want to do this, we're going to have other, you know, we're budget implications on how we make up those initial payments. Any other thoughts?
I should clarify, one of the options is to budget for the payments. The other option is to what's called capitalize interest, where you actually set aside bond proceeds to make that payment. That means it's 200,000, that's 207,000 less you have for capital projects.
I'm a little concerned about rates going up as well. You know, if we wait six months, you know, the interest rates are, seem to be heading in that direction, so upward, which would just add to the cost of, briefly answer.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for all your input and thoughtful discussion. We have some RIT reports, multi-financial reports and employer report. Any questions on the RIT reports? Okay, reports from board members, are there any board committee reports? I don't know, Mr. Robinson, you have anything more to add from your finance committee?
No, I think I'm exhausted.
Okay, I am too, I didn't say it. Okay, are there any other committee, any other committee reports?
As I mentioned to the board, I think, I said last week, I was working on the board development plan, so I think a big position, we get another recognition award from IASB. When I learned tonight from Mark Cunningham that the IASB is evacuating the recognition award, I'm putting out bulk from the board development plans, so it all will be responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any other board reports? Okay, Mrs. Kite.
It's not a report, but I just think when Rachel gave her presentation tonight, and I wish I had stepped in just to say, it is amazing. I congratulate you for going to a conference where we went, taking an idea, implementing it, getting all your teachers on board, and it was amazing. And I hope you share it with your other, the other schools, that's 20% really. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Any, any other reports? Okay. Topics for future discussion include a five-year financial update and revisit to the summer 2014 facility projects on January 22nd. It will not be a committee, the whole meeting, it will be a regular board meeting, and we will be taking action on many items that you heard us speak of tonight. Our next regular meeting after that will be February 12th at Lincoln Elementary School. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Laura Stevens.
All right. Okay, I'm Laura Stevens, I live at 377 World Wake Board Meeting, and I don't like folks speaking, I like emails. You probably know that. Okay, but we spared you tonight, okay? The topic is B-team sports, and here are the facts without swaying them. You did the survey, the response was clear and overwhelming, the community has spoken. We saw the results. Gym space, intermurals, clubs, all worked in unison four to five years ago. They worked just fine. Talked to the athletic directors, the coaches, I have, they want to work and they want the B-team sports back. They're the ones that should be here talking to you. Practices can be staggered, time can be taken back from the Park District, it worked before, it will work again. The middle school principals made their presentation tonight, it was a very nice presentation. It was supposed to be about co-curricular activities, but also got into other things, what they, which they would rather have the money, I understand that. But I heard no final recommendation from them other than they said that they want students supported activities. I get it, but there should be a recommendation. B-team sports, yes or no? What do they recommend? If you talk to athletic directors, you talk to the coaches, that's what they want. You talk to the kids, you talk to the parents, that's what they want. That's what the survey asked. Wheaton, I think you asked about what Wheaton thinks, or people in Wheaton think, how we are perceived. I'll tell you, I called, I emailed, I talked to middle school athletic directors, coaches, reps, probably beyond the ones that were listed on the sheet or on this presentation. Some have B-team sports, some don't. Some have cheerleading, football, baseball, other sports, we don't. You come to Wheaton, we have some stuff. Do we have the ultimate? No. And sports is just one of them. But we, when I moved here, I was perceived, I perceived our school district as the best. And I still think it is, but the best offers some of those things, we don't. When I got into this, talking about B-team sports, I did a lot of research, so, and you know, did too. So, we have some of those questions, maybe the principals didn't present in this presentation, so if you have any questions, ask those too. I have a daughter that plays volleyball, a son that plays basketball, they're an 18, they're not affected by this, but their friends are. I have a daughter who's on the seventh grade volleyball team, she's been wearing a uniform that's 10 years old and wears boys t-shirts. So, are we the best in our sports? Probably not, but we can be with a little bit more funding, a little bit more help and a little bit more support from our community. We can save money for the speed team addition cost by adding fees, I agree with Dr. Harris. We possibly can have parents do scoreboard, maybe, maybe not, after what I'm hearing. We can have athletic fundraisers, some schools do it. We can have parents participating more, we can charge for uniforms, we can have buses go one way. So, there's other ways to probably try and fund this. And I know the principals explored some of that and hopefully they make more recommendations too as a board. When we cut B-team sports, there was not surge in other clubs, that did not happen. Having B-team will not affect participation in other clubs. I have a daughter plays volleyball, she's on student council. If she wanted to be on math team, if she wanted to be in chess club, she can do all those things and so can any other kid that's involved. High school athletic directors and coaches should be here and you should talk to them, I have. They need more athletes trying out at the high school level. Kids give up in seventh, eighth grade if they don't make a team. So, they don't have the kids trying out freshman year at high school level. That's what they're asking for. That's why they want the B-team sports back. You probably, a lot of you probably played sports, I know Mr. Paulson did, in middle school. I did. I played for my mom in sixth grade, she was my coach in volleyball. I wasn't very good at first, I got better. I played at University of Illinois. Three of my sisters went to athletic scholarships in college, Boston College, University of Wisconsin and Penn State. That got us to college. I know it's not the same for all kids, but give them an opportunity to maybe go that route. Try it at college, at least try them in high school. That's what keeps kids out of trouble. That's how I keep my kids out of trouble. Thank you.
We didn't converse, but we have a lot of the same stuff. So, I just have three things I want to say real quick because this is a very long night. When you talked about the community engagement, when you said mandate, when you asked the question, one of the questions I asked you was, why wasn't this sent to the grade school and the high school? You would have gotten a bigger response, you would have gotten more, most of the people on my email list are grade school and high school, people that have missed out on these sports, so you would have gotten more of a community on that. But you want community engagement, this is community engagement, this is what people want from you. The other thing too, there's always, you guys have so many balls in the air, there's always other issues. You cannot look at this as an individual issue. Nothing's an individual issue. You have a ton of things. You have to make this work. This is an all-around education for these children, not just, it's not just about sports, it's about their all-around education. And I know we've talked about that. But we're not asking you to just throw money in the B-team because B-team's so important. It's for these students being all around. And the last thing I want to say is that I kind of feel that the middle school principals were kind of thrown under the bus here. I mentioned this in another speech. This was a district-wide cut, $6.7 million, we had to cut from everywhere. They didn't get an extra $150,000 or back or cut. So, I mean, when we took the B-sports away, you guys looked at a big picture of all the things you could cut, and that was one of them. That's why you saved $150,000 from the middle schools. So, I feel like to make them come up with the money was, was just a little bit unfair. This is a district-wide issue and I feel like it should be a district-wide budget. That's what I got to say. So, that's why I'm not going to slip the best tires on the way out. And then we did call all the other schools and all the other athletic directors and did talk to them. And when you talked about emotional, about are we proud of this school, do kids, people want to move here? Talking to these people, yeah, the Glen Allen District, they're a lot smaller, she's like, yeah, we really can't do B-team. But the, you know... But the, you know, we're Tallahassee, they're like, well, yeah, we've got a lot of kids, we have to accommodate them. And they're like, you don't have to, you know, teams with your size? So, it is, it's, you know, emotional, embarrassing, whatever, you know, you want to be proud of it. Love our district, we have a great district, and I know we can make this work, working together. Thank you so much.
Sorry, plug it.
I guess I'm going to start off as being a part of the Engage 200 Committee, and I know we're going to be, Dr. Harris is going to be talking about the stated district on next Wednesday. I really believe that this $10 million bond issue should be a topic for discussion, and let's get feedback from the public on what they, what they think about it, because less than a year ago, the public did reject a bond referendum for the Jeffersons for $18 million. So, now you're coming back within, within a year, and you're asking for more money again, but this time you're going to not vote to the voters, you're just going to do it yourself. I think that's being very, not transparent and very open. I'm also, Jim Madison has some comments about, you know, the netting of the bonds. I'm just confused how you could spend $13 million, which is the $10 million that you borrow, costs $3 million of interest on the bonds, and it's only going to cost $8 million while extending, well, it's gone down, but extending the interest and principal payments for additional three years. The math doesn't seem right by saving that kind of money in this environment, considering, you know, about the money you're borrowing. And the other thing is, they show the graphs again up there, showing how the graphs go up. Who struck, you know, I asked the question, who structured the bond payments in the first place that made the graphs go up? Is it the same people who's making the presentation now? It just doesn't make any sense, and we keep on refinancing these bonds every few years, and I know we refunded and refunded and refunded over time, but these bonds, and we keep on paying fees and interest costs every time we refinance these bonds. And also, by not paying the interest, again, for five years, by, and that $10 million, that's $300,000 a year in interest carry costs, and again, that's half of B-sports that we were complaining about, $160,000. So, here we are again, spending, you know, $3 million on total interest, and half of that for carry costs while they could pay for the B-sports. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Is there anybody else who signed up for the talk at town or would like to speak? Okay, we do have a need for a closed session tonight. Closed session items listed for possible action, there is only one, purchase of real property. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. Moved by Mr. Roman. Seconded by Mr. Gambiani. Mrs. Sander, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mrs. Intamar?
Yes, and I wanted to mention there is no action expected after a closed session. So, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.